Is now called to order. Welcome to the regular town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona for Monday, March 6, 2024. We've had a roll call already and we've had an executive session. So we're at the pledge of allegiance. Joe, would you please lead us? Public announcements, I guess everyone probably saw on a number of outlets that we had, we had a brush fire in town on Highland Sunday. A pretty exciting time there for a while. Appears that it was contained. I'm amazed that it stayed down that wash and did go over the sides. So it is fire season and just as luck would have it, tonight we have a discussion on, on fire. And the firemen are at a fire right now. There's a structure fire in town. So they left a few, oh, there, you're coming back. Oh, so we have structured fire going right now. So it's exciting time for the fire department. First thing on the agenda is call to the public. And I'm going to do a little business that we missed at a meeting in March. Yeah. Terry Webb submitted this March 25th, 2024 on item number two regarding the Phoenix interconnect. And she wanted to have this read. And since it's not on the agenda tonight, I have to read it here called the public. So Terry, if you're watching, sorry, we missed this. And I can't answer the question here because of it's not on the agenda. So I'll have to give you a call. We have a really good answer on that. So she says, I would like my comments to be read aloud. Mayor Morris and town, town council members, thank you for your time. I understand the need for a water supply connection. What I am struggling with is the exorbitant cost to our already high water maintenance treatment facility for a population of 5,340 residents. When the interconnect with the city of Phoenix was initially discussed in 2019, was a cost analysis comparison with the town of carefree with an already available and existing water connection? And did our town reach out to care for you about a possible comprehensive settlement agreement? And as I said, I can't answer that because it's on the agenda, but I will call Terry and answer it in person. Soon as I get her phone number. With that, do we have any other called public?
Yes, we do. First up is Joe Friedman.
Joe Friedman, 40020 North 71st Street, Cave Creek, council staff, citizens. I just wanted to say something real brief. You already brought up fire in Highland. I happen to live on Highland. And I was here for the big fires, I think it was 2020. And I was having a conversation with somebody, an ex council member, Paul Diefenreifer, and he said, you know, we got to educate people. And I said, yeah, I've heard that since I've come here. More people are coming here from other places and et cetera. We, we, at this stage, and this is just my feeling. I think the council needs to investigate possibly coming up with some form of an ordinance like other cities have that pretty much is a requirement for property owners to do something about their weeds. I mean, stink net. Five years, it started at Ben Avery five years ago. It's a problem right now. We never had it before when I moved here. We've got fires that are going on all over the place. Just for example, Glendale, Arizona, if anybody saw it, had a big article in the Republic about them. They're going to have an ordinance for fire now. Weeds, Cottonwood's got an ordinance. Like a lot of places do, just FYI. Grants Pass, Oregon, and I can send these to you guys too. I can email them to you. Bismarck, North Dakota, Tall Grass, Knox, weed control. If we don't do something about this, our homes are all going to burn down. And the other thing is, is that when I spoke to the fire people out there, I went out there the next day. He told me, he said, it's going to be a rough summer and we got lucky last year. So I hope you guys will consider, you know, putting your heads together, maybe coming up with some sort of ordinance. So the citizens, especially the ones that are coming in from other places will understand this because education's not working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa.
First of all, I would like to address all of the people that are saying that we are anti-trail. That is just complete nonsense and you need to stop saying that. I love the trails in Cave Creek. That's why I moved here from the East Valley. So I can get on my horses and ride them right from my house. So whoever on Facebook or whatever, I'm not on Facebook. You are spreading false information and you need to stop. That is not what this is about. This is about private property rights and I'm talking about the Morning Star Trail, by the way. Government overreach and the cost to the taxpayers of this town. This is about people spreading false information and then saying that we are uninformed. Star Thornton, I am talking to you. You don't know me. You have never called me to have a conversation, yet you tell the world that I am uninformed. I am informed. I have made it my mission to be informed. As the saying goes, a picture is worth a thousand words. So here we have a picture. Right here. Where this arrow is. That is where my property starts. And Mark Staff's property ends. That is according to the map, the trail map. I printed off at the city council website. This switchback right here is this exact point. Can she approach? So you guys can all see it closely?
We, we've been out there and we're
You haven't been right there, I promise you.
We have three minutes. We're going to have to hustle here.
That's okay. You still need to look at it. Because you really can't have access to that area. It's like a 30 foot drop, straight down. At the minimum, some parts of it are 50 foot. It's a cliff. And that's right where your trail says you're going to do a switchback. So you're going to do a switchback into the thin air? Are you going to build a bridge? That area is always getting washed out with heavy rains. Jerry Freeman does a fantastic job of maintaining that road. Every time it gets washed out, he goes out there and he fixes it. So I'm not sure how you're going to build a trail. According to the paperwork, staff is gifting a 10 foot easement. And there's definitely not 10 feet. Probably not even two feet. To complete that switchback. That will go right into the air. Like I said, are you going to build a bridge? That's going to be very expensive. I could tell you this, I would not take my horses on that trail. I would most likely stick to the road. It's safer. That's what most responsible horse riders would do. So now they would be on my property. And on Jerry's property. So would I be responsible if there's a death or an injury? That road is very narrow. And if there's a trash truck or another car coming, where's the horses to go? It could be a very dangerous situation. Also, on the incline to Mr. Freeman's property is just as dangerous. I do have pictures for that as well. I can email him if you would like me to. And so we're going to do all of this trail that ends at Mr. Staff's property. And I have a picture if you'll flip that around.
We, your, your three minutes, your, your three minutes.
Right here. This is where Mr. Status property ends. There's a pink flag. And it dead ends right into somebody else's private property. So where exactly is this trail going to go? So I ask you, what is the point in all this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Ireland.
Bruce Ireland, Morning Star. Hello, council. I just wanted to say that I in Abraham Abay on Saturday, hiked and found one of the alternative. I believe still owned by the town trails, old wagon trails, very wide. I sent those pictures to town manager, Greatnie Miller, this morning via email. That's it. I have this for you as well. It's very illustrative of what we already have, which is a great trail going from the east to the west. I just wanted to say that if it's about trails, we're in good shape. We have trails from the east to the west. This particular trail on Morning Star going to the 48th Street alignment through a neighborhood where all, all the people actually don't want it. Is a short trail, relatively speaking. And I'm completely opposed to it. Now, I know it's not the agenda item, but I also wanted to say that we have an aerial map. This aerial map shows alternative options for, for these trails that I was mentioning. And from Spur Cross over the creek into the west. We're in real good shape, guys. We have trails. If this is about trails. And I'd like that to be put into the record, these two documents. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the call to public.
Thank you. Town manager report.
Not a lot tonight, but I did want to touch upon, as the mayor referenced, we did have a couple of fires this weekend. As we're starting to get into our fire season, it's, it's really important for people to be aware of their surroundings. The two incidents that we had were actually caused by humans, people that were working out in the desert. Either near their homes or contractors working on properties or fences. And so what I wanted to just make sure that people are aware that they need to always take the right precautions. We're also about ready to start installing another few weeks of new evacuation signs. So in the event that we did have a serious fire, there would be signs so that people could see our evacuation route, which is actually on our, our website. Also, we are going to start getting ready for additional labor to be around for the wildland fire task force that will be available starting the middle of this month. Apparently, I was not here, but the horrible fires that we had four years ago all began in May. So it's all appropriate to be trying to do that this month. And then also we have those digital signboards that we have. We're going to also have messaging on that that relates to fire prevention and other types of related messaging. That's all I have at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, a presentation of community firewise report. Presented by the Director of Community Risk Reduction and Aaron Casem, if I pronounce that correctly, from the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Service, who I believe was out here over the weekend.
He was out here all weekend.
Yeah, I, I stopped and talked to him Sunday morning.
And he hasn't made it tonight. We lost him for tonight. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead and do this. And Councilman Echema, Echema, could you please come down and bring your board to the front?
Actually, we have one, one board member representing tonight.
Okay. And Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, what we're doing tonight is we have officially received our second Firewise Community Certification and it's Rancho Manana. And Councilman Elkma and his board over there have done, they've been working on it actually for about a year and a half or so. It's been a while to get it cleaned up, to reduce the fuel loads, to make sure we have access. And so their community was officially submitted to the state, which is the Department of Forestry and Fire Management and the National Fire Protection Association. And they have awarded Rancho Manana as Cave Creek's second Firewise Community. So I would like to congratulate you for that. Here's an official certificate.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as part of, as part of your prize, you get a sign. So.
All right. Our first Firewise was Whispering Hills and our second is Rancho Manana. It usually takes a community to do this. Awesome. Thank you. Jim came to the board, the HOA board. He really helped us understand that fire, the fuel load that was, you know, lying under all of the underbrush. How important it was to get that cleaned up. And the members of our HOA really took that to heart. And so they spent a lot of money cleaning that up. The golf course was also a partner in it. Allowing access to places that where the homes are right next to the offer. So it's been a great effort and it looks awesome. So.
Everyone participated. Once we identified areas to clean up, all of our, all of our owners were very, very diligent in taking care of it on a timely basis. So that's what makes a difference.
So.
Could you briefly tell us what, what it was, what's involved in getting that award so that others might be interested in doing it?
Yeah, you pretty much have to be in associations because they won't do it on individual houses, the awards. So we don't have very many homeowner associations in town. So we've picked off the two biggest ones so far. I think we have two more that we can do. But basically what it entails is there, you're looking at access, you're looking at water supply, you're looking at type of construction for your houses. And you're looking at the fuel load around the houses, which is your brush and fuel. And is it overhanging onto your, your roofs and all that kind of stuff? So all the stuff that we've been talking about, Mayor and Council for two years about people establishing defensible space around their homes. You don't have to have a Firewise certification, but people need to do this because the more you establish defensible space around your homes and clear out the flash fuels and the invasive fuels and that stuff, the better chance our firefighters will have of protecting that house in the event of a fire, which is again, a great example. That was on Saturday morning, so or Saturday afternoon. So again, you don't have to be Firewise, but the defensible space needs to happen for everybody. We talked about the education a little bit earlier. Somebody mentioned that. We're going to keep doing it. It's up to the residents to, to do their own homes and protect their properties. It's not as much what your neighbor does or doesn't do. It's what you do for your property. And Rancho Manana took it upon themselves to make everybody notify you of that and they all, they all did it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation of the 2024 Employee Benefits Study conducted by Logic Compensation Group.
Mayor, we forgot the consent agenda.
I'm just made a little mistake here. We are, we're going to do our consent agenda next. Approval of off-track paramutual wagering license at Harold's Restaurant doing business as Harold's Cave Creek Corral located at 6895 East Cave Creek Road. Requested by David Johnson, Vice President of Turf Paradise. And we're looking for a motion to approve that item on the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
All those in favor, you saw by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it passed a seven zero. Now we're on to the presentation of the 2024 Employee Benefits Study. Conducted by Logic Compensation Group, presented by the Deputy Town Manager and Logic Compensation Group.
Mayor, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, Teresa couldn't be here. This was her project, but as just a little bit of information and background for the public. The council will recall that back in the fall, there was a compensation study that looked at the compensation of our entire organization. And as part of that, the Logic Compensation Group gave a presentation on its recommendations to have our salary ranges be much more competitive with the surrounding area, which council gave direction and that's happened. But as part of that, there was some, a good discussion during, I believe it was the strategic planning process, just to ensure that our benefits provided to employees are comparable and competitive with our neighboring communities as well as those elsewhere in the valley. So before you tonight, you're going to see a presentation that will go through and compare our benefits to other those that were surveyed, not just in the valley, but elsewhere in Arizona. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laurie Messer, who is the Managing Director of Logic Compensation Group. And she has a presentation to go through. And feel free at the end of the presentation or along the way, if you have questions for her, she'd be happy to answer the questions the best she can. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Messer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I would, this evening, actually, I'd like to share with you just a little bit about the study background, give you an overview of the process. How we initiated the study, what we found throughout the study, along with our recommendations. And talk a little bit about some considerations for some benefits enhancements here at the town. Just, okay, I'm just, I gotta get used to this little clicker. We were engaged by the town to take a look at the town's benefits to see how they compared with surrounding municipalities and other towns and cities in Arizona that were of similar size. We wanted to understand how does the town's benefit package stack up against the market and is it competitive? So based on that, we, phase one was the study initiation. Phase two was where we went out and collected the market data. Then we analyzed it and then came up with some recommendations. Throughout the entire process, we did have ongoing communications with the town in order to make sure that we were all moving in the same direction. So with regards to the study initiation, we met with the town's former town manager and the deputy town manager, town clerk, to understand the current state of affairs with regards to benefits and understand where were, might be some areas of concern. Then we worked with the town to develop the questions. What were we going to ask about? In doing so, one of the first things that we took a look at is who are we going to compare against? And this comparator market mirrors the comparator market that was utilized for the compensation study. Those organizations in orange did not actively participate. However, they did give us their information and we extracted it from what they provided. Only one organization did not want to play and that was the city of Sedona. We got no response from them at all. So pretty good response rate, pretty pleased about that. And when we developed the custom survey, sent it out to the comparator organizations. And then when we got it back, we did several validation checks. Were there any extreme numbers or data that looked unusual? If there was, we reached out to those organizations directly to get clarification. In order to do the analysis, similar to the compensation study, we need to have five data points. So in doing so, we surveyed health and welfare benefits, retirement savings and planning benefits, paid leave, professional and career development benefits, and other things like allowances, bonuses, and other special services. The good news is the city is highly competitive in the marketplace with regards to their benefit package. The city is actually leading in one area and that is the offering of Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day as a paid holiday. Other organizations may use things like a floating holiday or something. It's not specifically pointed out as Columbus Day. There were a few areas, three in particular, in which the town was lagging. And those happened to be the wellness, a wellness program, an incentive, technology allowance and a vehicle allowance. And I'd like to expound upon those a little bit more. With regards to the wellness program, five of the organizations came back and said that that is a benefit that is done through their health insurance provider, things like incentives and whatnot, health screenings, preventative screenings, things of that nature. Other organizations where the wellness program may not have been offered through the health insurance company as well as those that did have it through the health insurance company, there were other things like gym discounts for employees. Financial coaching, nutrition programs and coaching that were coordinated through their organization and not the health plan. And the wellness program is a low cost, typically a low cost benefit program offering for employees. When it comes to technology allowance, this was kind of a tricky one to determine whether the town was leading or on par, or I'm sorry, lagging or on par. Because it's our understanding that the town does provide employees who are in need a cell phone, right? There's no outside allowance. Of the organizations, there were 86% of the organizations offered a technology allowance with an average of about $74 a month. That is taxable income. However, a cell phone provided is not. So that was kind of a tricky one to assess. The next area in which the town was lagging was a vehicle allowance. You weren't lagging terribly. 59% of the organizations do offer vehicle allowances, but they're typically a benefit for mid-management and above. A lot of the organizations that did not offer vehicle allowances did have town or city vehicles available for employees to use throughout the day if they needed to go to different locations. Those that did offer the vehicle allowance did not allow for that. Those city-owned or town-owned vehicles were available for individuals who did not get a vehicle allowance. The average vehicle allowance of those that did offer it was $452 a month. So, yeah. And so overall, this is good news. The city is, or the town, sorry, I keep saying city. I know it's town. Is well aligned with the market when it comes to their benefits program offerings to employees. We did have some recommendations and things to consider. If the, we would recommend a wellness program of some magnitude, however big or small. It's a good benefit for employees. It helps to engage employees and it, like I mentioned earlier, it can be implemented at a low or no cost. There may be some administrative time, but it's very nominal. Another thing to consider would be wellness program incentives. And I don't know, I know that there's going to be another health plan offering and sometimes through the health insurance carriers, you can get a discount if you do things like an annual physical or whatnot. So. And then also potentially consider a vehicle allowance. However, I also understand that the town has vehicles for employees to utilize as well. Those were really the only two, you know, only couple of things that we, out of the survey that we came up with as the recommendations. We do understand that there are going to be some improvements to the benefits program beginning in July of, I guess it's just two months away. I, we understand that you, this town is going to be expanding the current flexible spending account amount. Adding Delta Dental to the dental plans. Offering another medical plan option for employees. Offering additional voluntary life insurance as well as offering voluntary pet insurance. So those are some nice enhancements to the town's benefit offerings effective in July. So we did want to recognize that despite the study, there's been some additional enhancements that are coming around the bend. So. Basically covers it. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Seeing done? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is council discussion. Is this the one, Gray, that we're going to do next, the number two there?
Actually, since it kind of covers both department directors, I think we may want to just do this. I believe Sean's part of this as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll go ahead and do this as well.
Okay, council discussion, possible approval of a construction manager at risk. CMAR contract with Sonoran Crest Construction to complete tenants, tenant improvements to a shell building. CMAR contract with Sonoran Crest Construction to complete tenants tenant improvements to a shell building constructed under a separate contract with the Foothills Food Bank for the approved joint ground and premises lease agreements approved by the town council by resolution R twenty twenty-two dash eighteen presented by Development Services Director and the Utilities Director who is uh joining us via Zoom.
And Luke's gonna take the lead on this, right Luke?
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Mayor members of council. Uh, if you recall, um, back in two thousand and twenty-two, the town council adopted a resolution, uh, adopting a joint ground and premises lease with the Foothills Food Bank, whereby the town would uh lease um approximately two acres of land out at the wastewater treatment plant to the Foothills Food Bank. And the Foothills Food Bank then agreed to build the town um utilities department and public works uh staff office um space totaling thirty-two hundred square feet. As you can see, the project is underway. Construction activity is happening out there with the, with the food bank. This um, this contract before you this evening uh selects the contractor Sonoran Crest Construction to proceed with the finishing out of that tenant space that is being um built and given to the town for its use. Utilizing um community risk, uh, Mr. Ford's uh brilliant contract for C Mar uh that he used for the fire station. We, we essentially use that as a boilerplate for this exercise, um solicited bids, and that's what's before council tonight. Um, just as a side note, the um staff, the utilities department and town engineer are essentially sharing the, the cost in their budgets respectively, approximately half and half, since it is a joint um building for each department. Then I don't know if Sean, other Sean. If Sean has anything to add. We can hear you.
You know, he's gonna add is that um, you know, there are, this is just supposed to be uh clipping the, the finishes inside the building and doing mechanical, electrical. There'll be still other actions that we're coming back to council. Um, uh, we're, I'm doing one for a duct bank, which will connect the existing water ranch building to the building. So um, we'll actually have the electric, our portion of the building will be powered by the plant with this backup generator. There will be a network connection between the two buildings, and then we have a, uh, another contract we'll be bringing forward, which will be for the um the systems furniture to equip the furniture inside the building. So this is a first of a couple of actions, but is in both in our capital program in wastewater and uh the cave creek water, as well as in public works to fund it both this year and next year to complete this space for town staff. So we're looking forward to this. This will give staff a much improvement in the workspace that they have down there.
Questions by council? I have a couple. I, this is a lot of money, and it's uh my, my calculation is uh hundred and uh almost two hundred dollars per square foot. You say this is only a part of the uh, of the improvements?
Yeah, our, our um mayor council, uh, we've been told is the duct bank between the building, uh, for electrical power, that's about a hundred thousand dollars. We're working on that detail right now. That allow the building, our portion of the building powered by the treatment plant is a fairly far distance, about eight hundred feet we have to transfer. And the furniture uh estimate right now is coming out at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to equip the furniture for the building.
What, what else is coming? Is it, we're seeing this in pieces. We had the one piece for the building, and now we have this piece, and I'd like to see all that together at one time rather than a piece by piece, so we know what we're getting into. If one follows the other, uh, you'd like to see the whole thing was.
Okay, we don't have that in front right now, but the next action will be coming forward and the contract for the duct bank. So we can give you an outline of all the, all the costs uh to completion with that action, which will be coming in a couple of council meetings. If that's okay, council, Mayor Council.
Mayor, if that's okay, we'll come back with a table that shows um this action and then all the other anticipated expenditures. So you can get a bigger picture of it. Unfortunately, that wasn't uh something that had been planned on for tonight, but it's a very good question.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just blown away by the size of number or the square footage blown away completely. So I'd like to see the whole package before before I'm agreeable to doing anything.
So are you wanting to just carry this over then?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to carry that. We can, we can get a motion if you'd like to, but uh, yeah, I, I, I think we.
We can withdraw and just come back.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, next one is the council discussion, possible approval of a professional services contract with NCS engineers to provide design and permitting uh support to repair and upgrade the Third Avenue and Joy Ranch Reservoir Booster Site in the Desert Hills Water System for an amount up to fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars presented by utilities director.
Evening, Mayor Council. Um, so as, as presented here, this is one of the facilities that we have out in Desert Hills is the Third Avenue Joy Ranch Reservoir. Uh, the site also contains the largest um uh well in Desert Hills. Uh, we have an issue with uh the arsenic levels. So since the town's bought this, operated the system out of Desert Hills, purchased and operated the system, we've had to uh uh blend the water out there. Um, and then actually also provides a boosting capacity for the lower pressure effectively the areas south of Desert Hills or Joy Ranch Road in Desert Hills. Next slide, Brian. So this is, this is showing the site relative to the, the uh Desert Hills uh distribution system. So um, there's been a couple of inspections of all those reservoirs. We have four active steel reservoirs out in Desert Hills. There was a two thousand and fifteen inspection, and then we followed that up in twenty twenty-two. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we actually engaged with NCS to uh help us um put together the estimates from, or the, the inspection reports that we got from the divers. Uh, how we inspected them is we actually had divers go uh inside, inside the tanks and find out what's going on with them. Um, and then they've uh prepared an estimate of the repairs for each of the four sites. Uh, in addition to the uh repairs, just general things like coatings, uh interior structural uh rafters that need to be replaced inside their steel reservoir. Um, NCS also indicated there's a few things that we should do for safety and operational improvements. Just the uh, the, the site is, is, needs to get an update based on that. Next slide, Brian. Um, so what we're trying to do is actually look at uh, um, not only the uh current improvements to this reservoir. Again, this is the largest of the steel reservoirs out in Desert Hills. Uh, as we want to look at the um, the booster station itself, uh, one thing that's coming out of the integrated master plan is that this is actually a good location to look at doing a second booster station, a high-pressure booster station. Uh, currently, uh, the area is north of Joy Ranch Road in Desert Hills is being fed from another site called Seventh Street, which has a small tank. It may be more efficient um to actually uh consolidate the reservoir, the boosting capabilities at this site. So we're going to look at how we could lay that out. And the other nuance of this site is, um, while it has the largest production well in Desert Hills, the uh, the contaminant level of arsenic is higher than uh as allowed for. So the town uh in two thousand and ten did some pipeline improvements, and then what we do is we effectively blend uh treated CAP water from the cave creek system through a line. So when the well is running, the arsenic blend line actually has to start first before the well will run. It makes sense to disconnect that arsenic blend line uh and look at doing wellhead treatment. That was actually something that was considered uh several years ago, um, when there, there was a discussion on how to do arsenic treatment on Desert Hills. If they elected to move ahead with these pipeline improvements, we're finding that the, the way the pipeline system out of Desert Hills works is as uh not optimal because of the, the closed valves and how the system is being isolated to, to force the cave creek water up to this site. So uh, NCS has uh both experience with this tank. They were involved in the twenty twenty-two assessment. They can help us look at how to lay out the second set of booster site, uh booster pumps. And they also have experience in the arsenic uh blend system, arsenic treatment systems at other facilities throughout the valley. So we thought there'd be a good exercise to get that all done at once. So what we're looking to do tonight, next slide, Brian. Um, it's just that the action would just be to, for the design and permitting side of, of the um this project for fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, once a contractor is selected, so we'll get together and this will give us a design package, some linear design on how we can prove this site. And then a design package for the reservoir repairs that we can then go out and bid. Uh, the goal will be to bid it over the um, the um late summer into the fall and then uh take the reservoir offline in the, in the fall, winter to the repairs. Anticipate probably we'll have this site off, offline for about a month while we complete the repairs necessary. At that time, we'll come back and amend the scope of work with NCS for the construction phase. Until we get a contractor, but we don't know uh how much they need and how much time they're gonna need, but this will get us to a preliminary design on the site and a detailed design for the reservoir repairs. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions from council?
When you're blending with uh CAP water, uh, can you give us an idea of the ratios that you need in order to bring the water up to permissible standards?
Yes, Mayor Council. Um, currently, the blend program that's been approved by Maricopa County Environmental Services for Desert Hills is um, it's a fifty-fifty blend. And that was something that was established back in two thousand and ten, something we've looked at. So effectively, for every gallon of well water that that site produces, we have to have a gallon of cave creek um treated CAP water going through the site. Uh, we've been looking at that with the new integrated model. Um, we think that we're pushing so much uh cave creek water into Desert Hills that we might be able to reduce that, and we're going to do some evaluations um of, of the water coming into Desert Hills and how much we'd get up, even if we opened some of the closed valves in the system. But right now, it's a fifty-fifty blend. We have to have uh fifty for every gallon of well water, we have to have a gallon of treated uh CAP water coming in from Cave Creek to that site.
Is this in the CIP? Or is this going to be as part of the great study when we update it? Is this going to be paid for by us, or is this going to be paid for by the users?
Sean?
Mayor Council, uh, this, this project, actually, the reservoir we had has been in the CIP, it's been in the CIP for a few years, um, just because of staff resources. We're getting a late start this year with it. We were supposed to do it last year. Uh, we've pushed them all out. The extra work associated with the um, the um uh, looking at the booster sites and the arsenic treatment that's coming out of our integrated master plan, but this is part of the Desert Hills um capital program, so it's being paid for by the Desert Hills users. Uh, this is where the funding is coming from.
Thank you.
Bill? Uh, question I have is uh, uh, you mentioned closing some valves to, to put pressure up there. Is this, is this part of the problem with overpressuring some of the pipes that we seem to repair a lot?
Mayor Council, um, with master plan, we've seen some interesting modeling results. So, yeah, the, the desert hill system struggles partly because of the number of closed valves um to help force the water. Uh, Cloud Road is twenty-fourth street into the system, and then north up Twelfth Street and then across Joy Ranch Road to the site. We had a recommendation from the consultant, uh, Black and Beach, to look at opening some of the closed valves to help stabilize the pressures in Desert Hills a little bit better. And that might actually in case, uh, also help the pressures on the Cloud Road line on the, the cave creek side of the system that feeds that. Uh, we do have online monitoring at the, the interconnect site. We put that in place over a year ago, and we're seeing the impacts of that. We think the largest impact is when we spill the Fourteenth Street reservoir, which then in turn is used to, to double pump the water up to Joy Ranch. The recommendation is that we look to um, uh, take Fourteenth Street offline and see how the system operates that way. And it might be more efficient and stabilize the pressures uh from the flows and pressures and flows going into get to Desert Hills from Cave Creek, which will be benefit to both systems.
Okay, are there any other more questions? Um, there's public comment on this?
No request, Mayor.
Okay, so uh, does somebody want to make a motion? I will make it. Motion to approve a professional services contract with the NCS engineers to provide design and permitting support to repair and upgrade the Third Avenue and Joy Ranch Reservoir-Booster Site in the Desert Hills Water System for an amount up to fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
This is financial, so roll call please.
Councilmember Elkama?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Augerton? Councilmember Bunch? Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes uh seven zero. Next item on the agenda, I think, uh, Sean, that's yours too, is council discussion and possible approval of a professional services contract with NCS engineers to provide design permitting and construction administration to upgrade the Thirty-Eighth Street Booster Site for an amount up to ninety-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars presented by the Utilities Director. So, take over.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So um Thirty-Eighth Street Booster uh site, you can see it here. Um, Brian, can you go next slide? It serves the area north of Cloud Road on Thirty-Eighth Street and goes north into the uh, to serve the properties. Currently, there's twenty-one homes being served by this booster station. Um, the, the site itself has a bit of a history in that um just before the town purchased the water system, there was a booster station placed out here by Global Water. It was not part of the purchasing of the system, so um they removed it and the town put this system in, in place immediately after we took over the system because we could not get enough pressure up to the top of the hill, in fact, on Thirty-Eighth Street. But what got put in place is just a single pump, uh, single um, um, uh, pump motor assembly. So we do have spare equipment, but um, in the case of this facility, if it goes down, uh, there's twenty-one homes that are directly impacted. We've actually been seeing some uh development activity up in this area. They're all planted lots. The area is defined by the, the, the shaded area there shows that forty lots that could be served by this property or this booster in total. So we're pretty much maxed out with the single booster station, and it's not good for reliability. So we'd be looking to increase the capacity of the site. Next slide, Brian. Um, so this is the existing site. There's actually a, a sound enclosure that staff have built over it because it's so quiet out in this area that um this motor, as it ramps up and down at its speed, the neighbors can actually hear it. Um, so we've put this closure over it, but there's a single pump at this site, a small hydromatic tank, but again, it's one point of failure for all these customers. So we'd like to look at doing a, a dual uh pump system. And then we like to also look at, um, with the master plan, we're uh trying to look at fire protection um for this area north of this booster station. Currently, we can risk by the pump capacity, which is only about thirty gallons a minute in fire flow. So the standard we've adopted is five hundred gallons a minute. So with NCS's help, we're gonna look at the site to see what we could do. If you have a temporary pump connection, or if we could put a pump in place that would allow us to get that type of fire flow up there while meeting the more domestic demands. The one real challenge to this site is it has only single-phase power. When you do larger pumps and motors, you usually like to have three-phase power, and they become more efficient. Um, but NCS has done these types of sites before, so they think they have some options for us. Uh, but with this, the scope of work is for them to do design, um, construction, and then construction administration. They came up with an estimate of how much we need to do. We'd also like to look at um, uh, maybe putting in some new distribution lines out in this area because there's some properties just north of the site that really don't need to boost. They can actually get enough adequate pressure um from the, the Cloud Road water line. So by running some parallel water lines, we could actually um lower their system pressures out there and take the, some properties off of this. So that's part of the why the design is a little bit higher than say the prior scope because it actually includes some pipeline designs on it. So next, next slide, Brian. Um, so again, the first uh two steps, um, define the future needs. We can do that based on the master plan requirements. We need to talk to APS. We need to find out if the site can be upgraded to a, a three-phase power. Um, and then we have to come up with an evaluation of the fire pump that we could install here, either a temporary connection, or if we can actually design one that will work at this site. So uh, with NCS, they'll do design permitting and construction administration this, this um scope of work. Next slide, Brian. We're asking council to approve this contract. So this is in the current capital improvement program to get uh started this year. We actually have most of the money um be in next year's CIP to actually implement the improvements. But we're asking for authority to start the project with NCS engineers so they can start the design phase and get that going for the ninety-nine thousand dollars. But that includes the um bidding and then also construction administration is, uh, so at this point, we think uh a hundred thousand dollars will get us all the design and um assistance we need, and then we'll just get, we'll figure out what the construction is in the fall, once we're done. Without, I can answer any questions.
Questions for council?
I turned it off instead of on. Sean, what horsepower are those pumps that you're looking at?
Pardon, was that? The power of the pumps?
The booster pumps?
Yeah, currently, it's a single, we have a single, um, I think it's a five or seven and a half horsepower pump out there fed from um, a, a single-phase uh one-twenty volts uh circuit. So it's not ideal for a, for a larger booster station. That's one thing we want to look at to see if we can upgrade that. Currently, the, the motor drive for the unit actually converts the single-phase power into three-phase power to uh power the motor.
Motors on those currently. All right. That was my, that was my curiosity question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a question on economics. Uh, we're gonna pay a hundred thousand dollars for twenty-one houses? And uh, there, there's the other houses, when the other houses are built up there in those other lots, um, I guess. I guess that's the capacity charge that they'd be charged to come in to buy into that system so that at some point we'd get the ninety nine thousand dollars back, so to speak, or some portion of?
Yeah, Mayor Council, this, yeah, so again, it's potentially forty houses in total, unless we can put some parallel pipes in to reduce that number. So there's twenty one currently customers, which we think are don't don't have is the reliability that we would like to be able to provide to our customers. With the project itself was was put into the twenty twenty two update to the capacity fee. So as the fees get paid for the other properties as they develop, the town would get reimbursed partially for the work.
Do you recall what those capacity charges are now?
Not that high. I'm trying to think for a a three quarter inch meter, it's seven thousand dollars and for a one inch meter, it's like just under twelve thousand dollars, I think, currently.
Hefty charge, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any last questions? There's public comment.
No submissions, Mayor.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
I can. Motion to approve a professional services contract with NCS engineers to provide design permitting and construction administration to upgrade the Thirty Eighth Street Booster Site for an amount of up to ninety nine thousand three hundred and eighty six dollars.
Second.
This is financial?
Member McGuire?
Yeah, I just said it, yes.
Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero and we're on to Thank you. I have the number six. Council discussion, possible direction. Sean, thank you for being on tonight. Number six is council discussion, possible direction to staff regarding the Development Services Work Plan Update presented by the Development Services Director.
Mary.
Mary, you holding five to the?
We skipped five.
We skipped five.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay. Ah, okay, that's what everybody is here for.
Must be subliminal, right?
I thought she was doing that on purpose.
No, I'm just, I've been looped, looped, looped all day long. Okay. Council discussion, possible appointment of Morning Star Ad Hoc Task Force members presented by the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you recall that on February sixth, the acceptance of the easements for the construction of a trail called Morning Star Trail was on the agenda. This trail consists of approximately one mile of four foot wide easement, of which would be only for trail use such as horseback riding and non non motorized vehicles. At that council meeting, there was quite a bit of opposition. Also, council members opted not to take action on that particular item. Due to the concerns that were raised, staff came back at a later time under the reports from manager and recommended that at we do two things. One was to actually hold a open house, public meeting for the sake of the residents to be able to get input and feedback from them as part of this process. It's important to try to hear from the residents, not only those that are impacted, but those that might want to see a trail in the area. And then also, the second part of that was to involve the residents in some sort of a public process where they would participate in a task force or a committee to provide input to the council with their findings or recommendations. So before you tonight, we we actually did on April twenty second and a public meeting, it was started off as a open house, but it was just not conducive for that. We had between eighty and a hundred people in this room. And so we decided to go ahead and we gave a brief presentation on the on the trail project, and then we heard from a number of residents, both against and and a few that were in favor of it. So then we also had residents at that same time go ahead when they signed in. They were asked if they wished to participate on the committee. So based on that, we used the sign in list for those people at the April twenty second public meeting to then develop a a listing of people that were recommending tonight before you to serve on a seven member ad hoc task force. So in your packet, what we have suggested is a process. Their charge or the mission of this particular task force will be to not only study and evaluate the proposed Morning Star Trail and the easements, but also look at other trail alternatives besides this. So they're not only going to be looking at just the the Morning Star Trail, but they will also be looking at other alternatives besides this. And then they are charged with developing a report and coming back to present that report with the task force findings and recommendations, and ultimately the council will then make a determination on that. As you see in your packet, there is a pro forma meeting format. It it kind of illustrates what the meetings might look like. We're recommending to try to do as what we can to fast track this. And what I mean by fast track, I mean, it's not going to be done anytime soon, but we're looking at it being done probably within the next six to eight weeks and having this completed and then having them come back to you. We also have recommended members of the public to serve on this. We try to keep it as balanced as possible with definitely two people who are either neighbors to this potential easements that might be accepted and impacted by this, as well as two that are definitely very strong advocates. And then maybe three people who are undecided. The names of the committee members are in your packet. We also recommend, because sometimes having been involved these types of processes, we've seen sometimes where people have every good intention to participate all the way through and and for whatever reason, they they either cannot or they have to drop out. And so we're also suggesting that we have the task force alternates or, excuse me, alternates to serve in the event that one of the primary task force members are unable to complete their duties. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, either about the process or how this might work. I have not mentioned the names, but there it's entirely up to the council. Council typically does the appointments of these types of committees. Also want to let you know, this will be a total transparent process. So we will do meeting notices. We will have agendas and we will have meeting minutes and the public will be available or, excuse me, the the public will have the opportunity to attend all of these meetings as they're being held. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The one thing I'd I really should do is if there are minority members who don't like what the majority rules, will there be provision for a minority recommendation or report?
You know, my my understanding on this was I have seen both ways. Sometimes it's just the majority. Sometimes it's minority, but I don't have an issue and I don't think the staff does either. Entirely, the entire decision will be made up by the council. But the key out of this is the report that will have their findings. You'll see not only what they've studied and what they've evaluated, but also their conclusion. And then council will be able to to make an informed decision on which way to go. I have no, I have not gone that far, to be honest with you, Mayor, to see if there would be like a Supreme Court with, you know, a majority opinion and a minority opinion. I didn't even get that far, so.
But well, if if they're, having been on committees for six years of my time in town government, I think it's important that that people who have a difference, different opinion have a chance to present that so the council can hear all all sides.
Good, good point. I I have no issue with that.
Questions from council?
I I have some heartburn over the individuals, some of the individuals who were selected to be on the committee. I feel pretty strongly that it should not include current plan commission members, former council members. I think that it needs to be grassroots. And so it should be strictly residents who are currently not affiliated with the town on any committees or commissions. I did have some suggestions if you guys wanted to hear it. I I so that would eliminate. And I'm also going to say this on the record. I have heard that there might have been some confusion when a person signed up for, when they signed the list that they were in attendance, that that also meant that they were interested in being on the committee. So.
Vice Mayor, if I may clarify that. Separate question, it wasn't just one sign in and it was very clearly delineated. So there's no way.
That that could have been.
Yeah, in fact, we even had people asked to be removed from that.
Okay, very good. Thanks for the clarification. So that would eliminate Ron Silva and Steve Lamar from the recommended task force members. And that would also eliminate Paul Defenderfer because he's a relatively recent town council member. It would not, in my opinion, affect Terry Smith because he was on the council so many years at least a dozen years ago. So I think. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll repeat myself. It would eliminate i- if we agreed with these suggestions, Ron Silva and Steve Lamar, since they're both on the plan commission. And it would eliminate Paul Defenderfer as an alternate because Paul was a council member in twenty eighteen, so relatively recently. I don't think it would affect Terry Smith. He was a council member at least a dozen years ago. Twenty years ago. So I think that he is representing his community. In place of those people, I think Jody Lesenby would be a wonderful candidate. And I think Beth Baumann would be another good candidate. I think Ernie Weber would be a good alternate. And I think we need to pick one more alternate, if you agree with my suggestion. I do have a question about who the staff lead would be. I think it's important that a senior member of the staff help lead these discussions or at least be around the table. That person would also, I would think, coordinate the meetings and coordinate the communications effort.
Vice Mayor, good point. And just for the sake of answering your question, and I neglected to say that, but tonight I just want to let you know and the public know that I intend to attend every one of these and provide any kind of technical support. Also, our Development Services Director will be taking the lead and I would be looking at him doing more of the the staff work, but I will be there providing guidance and direction.
Very good. That's great.
I have another suggestion for for name. Bob Anderson used to be on the Planning Commission. I think he's he's not involved in any of the pieces of town government. He's kind of a kind of a neutral guy.
I don't see him on this list.
I don't see him either, but I think we ought to reach out to him to see if he's interested. Because he he did want to serve on the planning commission. He's kind of a neutral neutral party. I mean, he.
Bob Anderson, he was on the plan commission.
Yeah, yeah, former, yes.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, this list is from the people who were at the meeting. And that's where the list was generated. I mean, I I'm not the sole vote here, but to me, it's only fair for the the people who were at the meeting who expressed an interest should be considered, and there's plenty of it.
Let's make sure I have the right names. You you have.
I suggested.
For the two people who were.
Jody Lesenby.
And who's the other?
Beth Baumann. And Ernie Weaver. And he could, I mean, those people could interchange however you'd like to see that. It could either be recommended or as alternates. And that's just my idea. I think others have a.
Well, to to get a decision, why don't you turn that into a motion?
Let's have some more discussion for Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah. Well, we really aren't supposed to have discussion until we have a motion on the floor, but.
But you opened the floor to discussion among the council members.
Yeah, I guess I did. Okay.
Also, it's really hot in here. Somebody please put the air.
So who, did you want to say something, Tom?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I didn't necessarily want to get into a list of for and against. I want to make sure the main thing we're doing is we're not deferring a four to three vote from the council to a four to three vote to a group. I'm encouraged by the explanation of the group from the original sponsor, which was Dusty Rhodes and from discussions with the town manager, but it is reminds to that scene in Casablanca where Louis, the French police chief, has drawn up unusual suspects. It almost seems we should have people chosen from a hat so we can't count the outcome before the study. David Smith's name is still on the list. He's a former member of the council.
No, I took it off.
Did you take that one off?
Oh.
No, you hadn't.
Oh, I meant to. I meant, I crossed it off on my list. Sorry.
So I, you know, I'm not here to suggest names or either for elimination or for addition. I just want to make sure this is not window dressing that we're taking the four to three that probably exists for a decision for this group and giving it to another group to give us political deniability.
Just for clarity, I don't even know how these people are are going to vote. And it could depend on what you discuss at the meetings. So I I didn't base my selections on that.
No, no, and and Mr. Mayor and Catherine, I'm so glad you made the suggestion you did because I had actually suggested earlier to staff that anybody in the P and Z, I think, has jurisdictional conflict because we don't know if this ad hoc advisory group would be sending something onward to P and Z related to this site or other sites. It just seems to me not the best hygiene to have P and Z current commissioners on the ad hoc group. And then with the former elected officials to to bring them back as part of a political decision this soon after having served. So I was very pleased to hear your suggestions and I certainly support it. And then I guess there's the belief that the committee could actually do some good. Not only with this issue, but other related issues as well. Maybe it'll it'll metaphor, metamorphosize or go on to after its work is done, some type of a permanent committee or interim committee or standing committee that would look at parks, recreation, things related to open space that are related to site specific places in the town for a different type of open space, parks, recreation, so forth. I don't know if that would be the natural outcome, but it might be a potential benefit. So I'm still plugging the David Phelps concept of pocket parts in certain neighborhoods. So.
Well, that's another agenda item.
I have a comment. Just briefly here again, I'm I'm absolutely pleased with the opportunity to include citizens in this in this conversation. Every time. So we've we've committed to training volunteers, right? And at the planning commission level, we do a conversation or we funded some training for volunteers who offer their thoughts about issues that come before us and before them. I'm interested in the difference between an ad hoc committee and the distance that this sounds like it could run. It doesn't sound like this is situational. It sounds like this, these are new voices to help us reflect on what we hear from the town. So that's a question I have that I'd like to hear answered before we move forward. We and to to my delight, actually, we're fortunate to have people who are interested in sharing their energy. And the opportunities aren't are unplanning. There's a utilities group. There's a grants group. There is in this conversation, the potential for a trails group and a water group. Unless I'm mistaken, those are a lot of community voices. And I'm wondering, I I know because of my experience on the planning commission, I know that there is a structure for how we run those meetings. Do we plan to overlay that meeting structure on each one of these groups that I've delineated? Or do I I know there's a a sense of urgency here. I feel that I I'd like to have this shared with with our constituents, but I think we're just a little short on the planning here. And this might be one of those ready, fire, aim deals.
Short of the planning, what way?
Well, it it feels like I don't know the specifics of how these ad hoc committees will operate or this ad hoc committee. So that's what I.
That's the question I have, I guess. I'm wrong, but but planning commissions are defined by state law. And by town ordinance, ad hoc committees, we have the ability, town council has the ability to set them up and I presume set the rules as we see fit. So this is meant to be.
And are those investigative ad hoc committee? And are those rules set?
They they have to follow the state open meeting law.
Yeah.
I mean, anything we do, as long as they follow this open meeting law, I think they're okay. And that's what that's what. That's what uh, Grady just told us. So there'll be somebody taking notes.
Right, if I may, a council member, um, again. The council can change this, but what I have written as the Morning Star Trail Task Force, um. Charge or mission, the purpose of this task force is to study and evaluate the proposed Morning Star. Trail along with other trail alternatives and present the committee's findings and recommendations to the town council to consider. So they're going to be very limited to this, I and I I realize that Councilmember Augerton was saying, you know, at some point, maybe that would be great for this to be expanded into some other. Some other opportunities, um, such as parks, open space, recreation, you know. Um, also, uh, Councilmember Akuma, I'm not sure you you started talking about that you had another question and I I lost. Like where you're going with it, and if you could repeat it or. Put it into some other way that I can understand what you were trying to make a point of.
I think the only point I was trying to make is that if we're going to ask. Citizens for their views on this issue, I want them to be in a safe space. Uh, with clear direction. And and I think that's all I need to say about that.
Um, and just to let you know that, as an example, the very first um, in the meeting outline that's in the packet we've described that will provide all the. Research materials and all that, the very first meeting. We'll kind of give them the lowdown on how the meetings will be conducted, we'll try to get a chair and a vice chair. We'll do all the things that you typically see in in a border commission, but it's not going to be a border commission, it'll just be this ad hoc. Task force that still has all the requirements that a border commissioner or a town council has as far as open meetings law.
That answers my question.
In the setup or uh, selection of names. There was an attempt to get. Individuals who were clearly on, at present, on one side of the issue, individuals who are on the other side of the issue. And select individuals who might be neutral, how does that uh, dovetail with the suggested names that you have, Vice Mayor?
I'm not entirely sure. I'm not, I have to be honest. I didn't select them by them.
Yeah.
I just know them. That they're active in our community, that they're vocal, that they care. Uh, and to me, that dedication is more important than where they stand on the issue.
I'm entering this slide of the table.
Mayor, I just have one other point I just want to make, um, there's been a lot of criticism, both from the public and um, we've heard council members. Uh, express concern about having current um. Planning and zoning commissioners and and former council members. The the thought process with that, and I'm, I totally, again, the council, this is a council-pointed body, so whatever you wanted to do. I'm not trying to um, change anyone's minds, but all I was wanting to do is kind of share with you the mindset. Lot of where I've worked in other communities, your your commissioners that are on planning and zoning have work groups that are studying particular issues. They'll come back and and report back their findings, and so that was kind of where I was coming from with that, a lot of times these commissioners have that kind of background and experience. And sometimes can synthesize very complex land use or or other types of issues, so that was one of the reasons why we were going down that path. Um, the other, the other reason was they did sign up and they were, they're also residents as well of the community. I'm not trying to persuade you, I'm just saying that was the mindset that went into that thought, it wasn't, we were trying to get. You know, people have suggested that we're trying to stack this group or whatever, that is not the case at all, I don't even know. Most of these people that are on the list, so, and I I had involvement on helping to select the people, so. Okay.
That's why I think it's important to be able to have a minority uh, report also, so we we hear, make sure that all sides of the issue reach, reach the council level.
Can I ask you one more time, what what names did you suggest? What names did you suggest?
The names that I suggested, first of all, just to reiterate, who I suggested be deleted from the recommended task force. Are Ron Silva and Steve Lamar. To be replaced with Jody Lesenby. And either Ernie Weaver or Beth Baumann.
And I think uh, that David Smith was also concerned.
Well, we didn't, I didn't get to that yet, that's the alternative.
Okay.
I I didn't see Ernie's name on this list.
He's on, he's on.
He's on this last page.
It shows everybody who.
Got it, sorry about that.
It's all right. So then for the alternates, we had to take Paul off and David Smith. And so we would need to replace them with two other people. So. So Jody, and let's just flip a coin and say Beth for the recommended task force members. If that equates with the. The strategy that you're after, kind of two and two and two, or two and two and three. And then for the task force alternates, it would be Ernie or Beth and then one other person. Out of the list. Does anybody have um? A vote, or a suggestion as an alternate?
Well, what, why don't we see if we can get the main one appointed and uh, and take that motion, then we'll just take the second motion to do. The alternate, so are there any more discussions on? The process or questions? So why don't you turn yours into a motion then for the recommended task force?
Right, I.
Beth Baldwin on this list.
Beth Baumann is on the second page.
Elizabeth, never mind, okay, thanks.
Um, I hereby recommend for task force members for the Morning Star.
I move.
I move, I move. The recommended task force members for the Morning Star Trail Task Force. By the way, the word task force in itself means short term. It's not an extended committee, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not ongoing, it's a short term, it has a task. That it will address and recommend, and then it will be gone. If we wanted to change that, after it's done, that would be like for the mayor said, so the. Yes, sir. Public comment, what are you pointing at?
Let's see here.
They're saying that pu- public comment comes before the motion is, should be made.
Yep, you're right, you're right, thank you, thank you, thank you, so let's take our public, the public comment and then uh.
Joe Friedman?
Thank you, Ernie.
Council, staff, citizens. So um, I just want to give you a little background about me real quick and then I'll get into my points. So I'm Joe Friedman, I reside at four zero zero two zero North Seventy First Place. In Cave Creek, I've been there since July thirty first of two thousand and one. I moved here in nineteen eighty one due to the lure of the desert and my love for the unique diversity of the state. So when I first arrived here, you could say I invested since then basically the majority of my life here in Arizona, so. I consider myself an accomplished hiker and outdoorsman with over a hundred rim-to-rim Grand Canyon hikes to my credit. As well fifteen of those being doubles, rim-to-rim-to-rim, all going straight through. When I turned sixty one, I left the corporate world to work at REI where I was recognized as a hiking expert. And people coming in for advice for rim-to-rim or doubles would be directed to me, that's the tip of the iceberg for me. Let's just say I understand the value of the outdoors and open space. When I was a student at ASU in the early eighties, I first came to Cave Creek to check it out. It was then I was convinced I must live here someday, in the late eighties and nineties, I lived at Joe Max and Pima. With friends in a rental house five acres next to Pinnacle Peak. Our nightly excursions, we would come to Cave Creek to hang out at the treehouse with Mc Brown. Uh, in the bowling alley as well, the old cart rides, um, I came here to hike and explore as well, now the town and its citizens are at a crossroad. I realize it's not always been fair or perfect on the path to making Cave Creek the absolutely unique community that it is today. But I think a lot of progress has been made and. That you just need to consider tweaking the plan in tonight's council agenda. Following on my suggestions for the Morning Star Challenge, so it becomes a reality. By the way, for the record, yes, I am in favor of a hiking trail being completed that cuts through there somewhere. Okay, point number one, I think this can be done in four meetings, not five, by combining the first two meetings and the proposal from Mr. Miller. Number two, I think you need to have the findings and recommendations turned into council for discussions at the vote on July fifteenth. So the council meeting on July fifteenth, that's when they should have the recommendations turned in, and that's when the vote should occur before um, the election takes place. Um, that gives the citizens committee a reasonable seventy days to get this done, those meeting dates should be on Tuesdays, May twenty eighth. June eleventh, June twenty fifth, and July ninth, and if it's on July ninth, then you'll have at least about a week. To kind of pull your uh, stuff together to present it. Point number three, if the meetings as proposed by Mr. Miller are public meetings. I believe they will turn into a mess if public comments are allowed at them, you didn't mention that earlier. I think it'll work best that if the public has concerns or questions, they can email the committee and staff prior to the next meeting. To be considered for discussion by the committee and staff. I had a point number four here, but it's already been covered, um, and I will say that um, I agree with the thing about the candidates, I I I thought about that today. I'm not candidates, but the council members, I also believe that if you are a candidate like I am right now for council. You should not be able to be on this committee right now, I know some people did sign up for it, um. Also, I want to say that um, when you said who's going to lead this committee, um. My original uh, writings, which have been changed since then, since I read the agenda, I thought Luke would be. With your guidance, Mr. Miller's guidance, I thought Luke would be the best choice, which they've kind of confirmed, Luke's lived here his entire life. He knows everybody, he knows the situation, he knows the players for and against, it just makes sense, and uh. I mean, our our town manager did admit he's not only been here a short time, so, anyway. Point number five, it's always better if you can make decisions about your own future. If the current council does not accept this recommendation in a timely manner, that. Opportunity will go away and we'll have allowed someone else to make our future, to decide our future. Point number six, remember.
Joe, how how many points are there?
This is it. This is point number six, and it's directed to you guys and you guys. If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem.
Kathleen Abay?
Hi, I'm uh, Kathleen Abay, I live at four two six two zero North Cohava Ranch Road. Um, I had asked to speak at call to the public, so maybe I wrote it on my sheet wrong. I'm, I came with Melissa to show the photo of.
We actually had it up during the call to the public, we thought somebody had taken your place when Bruce.
Oh, okay, so I apologize for that, but um, and thank you for having this discussion and being open about it, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for. Taking those people off the list because that would have been one of the things I would have brought up also. But it is a very contentious argument, um, the, I do have liability concerns, I know you're here to discuss the committee right now, so I hope that. You know, tho- those discussions are going to be put in, not just whether we put the trail here or we put the trail someplace else. Um, the fact that the neighbors up there, which I am one of them, I live up there, we already have ATVs coming across the mesa. On the other side, Friday night, we had eight of them blow through, and they come down through that rocky crag area, which is quite dangerous. And you could tell they're having a hard time. And then they went around and they went down our road, our easement. And there's a gate at the bottom, and and history has it that they blow through the gate, they just bust through it or they break it with bolt cutters or whatever. My point being that if we don't have the trail right now, it's not a public trail right now, we still have this nuisance and we become the policeman for it. We did call the sheriff, we wanted to report it. The sheriff had all good intention of coming, but he couldn't locate us because we're so isolated where we are. And the other point is that there are private lands up there, and the people at the top are not going to let these people come through. So you're constructing, constructing without a budget to put this trail in, and you saw the significance of the drop. It's going to cost a lot of money to do that, I'm not an engineer, I know just constructing my house, my excavation costs. That was what threw our budget, it was way more than what we thought it would be, so. The dollars you put to that trail, when you could go further north and have a trail that maybe is needing a little bit better cleaning and won't have so much controversy around it. Um, might be better served, so. Liability too, and Melissa brought that up, so I don't want to be redundant, um, on private property. Uh, you had mentioned at the open house that you would, the town would only be liable for that injury on the town portion of the trail, but how do you control that? Everybody's going to be liable who has anything to do with that trail. But thank you for removing those people off the the suggestion, I don't have a copy of the list, so I don't know who else there. I did have confusion, so you were right about that, I saw it and it said in the far right, are you for or against the trail? So I said no, so if that also meant, can, do you want to be on the committee, I just took myself right off and I didn't even realize. So, you know, yeah, but thank you very much, I appreciate the discussions, um, and I, I love living here, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers?
Abraham Abay, we have.
Um, the, the rest of speakers, please limit yourself to the agenda item, which is the appointment of the task force. Since we missed your call to public, we let that go.
Abraham Abay, four two six two zero North Cohava Ranch Road. First of all, I want to thank the committee. The council, the mayor, especially you. For bringing this to the public view. What it has done, it has immensely brought a neighborhood together, so tightly together. That the neighbors that did not know each other, they have become one voice. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to build a neighborhood, a neighborhood that actually wants to take care of one another. That actually cares for one another and has an agenda, yes, their agenda is to protect one another. Unfortunately, there is a flip side of this coin. The flip side of this coin is. People without knowledge of what this neighborhood is. They're acting like adolescent children. At junior high school, casting stones at good people with good hearts. So I want to caution you, whatever decisions that you make, however you go, please remember. You have received the trust of a community. And the trust of that community is, it has been given unto you to look after the common wealth. Of the community that has neighborhoods, and it is the agenda to bring these neighborhoods together to build Cave Creek. Not to divide Cave Creek. You know, I read the scriptures and it says, to love the Lord thy God with all your heart, with all your heart, with all your soul. With all your mind and with all your strength, and then love your neighbor as yourself. So whatever challenges before you, you have to think that you're in a neighborhood, this town is a neighborhood. So you have to have a love for each neighbor to realize whatever decisions you're making, it will have a. A impact. And that impact has to be to bring unity to Cave Creek, it has to preserve Cave Creek, and it has to help the community. To become stronger in itself. To work for itself, not to cause division. So I thank you for putting this little agenda together. I have to agree with Tom Augerton that this should really be. Not necessarily appointed by individuals that we know, so that it stacks things one side or the other. But it should be in random, in randomness, people will come realizing that they have an agenda. And if they truly have a love in their hearts for Cave Creek and for their neighbors, the outcome will be good. And the alternative would be to bypass this area. Thank you for your time, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Bill Bessore?
My name is Bill Bessore, I live at twenty four fifteen East Rockaway Hills Road, I am your farthest west resident. In the town of Cave Creek. And. Mr. Mayor, as Vice Mayor, Member of the Council, you keep showing up. And last time I checked, the pay's not very good, so I really want to thank you for showing up. You know, what I want to really talk about is being in favor of the trails, all the trails, in favor of the open space, and. I want your neighborhood to include my neighborhood so that we can be neighbors together, I do not think we need to be divided. I think there is a compromise there. I think we need this committee. Desperately, the task force, because what's been lacking is an opportunity for me to sit with with you. You know, we we agreed in that earlier meeting that. We all love the trails, we love open space, and I I've got to tell you something. I experienced exactly a month ago, a really serious health emergency, health situation. And it was imperative that I get my blood pressure down. And there's the best way to do that for me. Is to pretend that I am looking out at the trails that join my property, and I'm watching people on horseback. And that, you know, how the, I just love that. And I could see three people wearing cowboy hats on horses going down the trail on a beautiful sunny day. And that'll take forty points off your blood pressure right there. We need this. We need this open space and you need the open space. The town is currently thinking about how to acquire a great deal of open space. That Bruce brother, oh, he's got his earphones in. You know what? Some things are missing from this brother and I appreciate you, but see, see what's right over here. That's where I live. Okay. And it's not even on this. But you did a good job of covering. Yeah, but I'm just, wait a second. I have a point.
Direct your comments to the council.
But that's why we need to meet and do this together because.
Please, please, uh, let's.
As if that is a bad thing.
That's why we.
I'm, I'm inviting you to come visit. So the, also the Cave Creek Regional Park is not on here. There is a tremendous amount of space over there that everyone in the east part of Cave Creek will absolutely love to visit. It's a beautiful area. There Apache Peak, Apache Three Peaks is magnificent. When you go to the saddle, you can see as far as you can see with no sign of human habitation. And we want to make that part of the, the rest of Cave Creek's town. So thank you for creating this committee and the opportunity. And let's see if we can find a good compromise. There's got to be alternatives. We've got to find something that works for everybody.
Do we have any more speakers?
Julie Goldammer.
Okay, everybody please direct themselves to the committee formation only, not to the, not to the pluses, the minuses, where it ought to be in favor of just the formation of the committee.
I will.
That's the agenda item.
I'm Julie Goldammer. I live at thirty four zero twenty two North Fifty Second Street. I want to thank you, Mayor Morris and Vice Mayor Royer and all of you, members of council. I think without piling on many of my notes that I already had, I'm, I promise, but I do want to reiterate a few things. I think trust has been lacking or it may still be lacking, but I think people are coming around, right? I want to thank you all for putting this open house concept and the possibilities for more public input. That is what helps us keep our govern- government transparent. This is huge and that I do want to totally speak in favor of this task force. I also want to echo, ironically, I have some similar names. I won't continue to say what I, what Catherine already said, but I do want to say, I think it's very important that we have some input from the people who have served for a long time on planning and zoning, because I feel they can provide some very good input. So I'd like to see planning and zoning be part of one of the meetings at least. At some experts, subject matter experts in addition to legal experts, because I believe there are some risk management issues that need to be addressed with trails in general in town, including financial issues as well. I do agree, and actually I had some recommended people. The fact that some of us volunteered to be on this, I don't think that's a bad thing. If you ask me if I want to be on a committee, I'm going to sign up every time. That's just who I am. Whether or not the fact that somebody is a candidate or not, that doesn't make it a bad thing. I think it's fabulous that there's so many people that want to serve on this committee. And I think there are some other fresh faces in town that should be included. And I wanted to recommend Beth Baumann, Tracy Davies and/or Michael Baumann. Beth has amazing project management skills. I have worked with her before on several different types of task force. Again, Elizabeth Baumann. Tracy Davies also in her day-to-day activity, works with clients and project management. And they are fabulous people. They are very, very well spoken. They're very thoughtful and they have worked in the public a lot. So it doesn't matter. I, I agree that whoever it ends up being, it will be a good, a good step in the right direction. And I would like to say I am also equally in favor of keeping something like this trails equals preservation. Preservation is awesome. I am totally for that. I think we need to have some sort of an ongoing commission that deals with trails and conservation and preservation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are final speaker Lisa Greenman.
Hello, Council. I'm on this list and I'm, oh, first time Lisa Greenman. I live on Morningstar. And I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Royer for her perception of what a grassroots community committee should be. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight at all, but I just really wanted to say that because do Councilman Augerton sort of said the right thing, round up the usual suspects is what it looked like. And I think that this committee in particular should be a citizens committee. And I know my name is on there and I would like to say that I know of these people. I have met some of these people, but I really don't have any opinion. And to some of the other things that have been said, I, I would also say what I do know of these people and I know of myself. We have volunteered a lot. We have been on many committees. I used to run a board meeting every Monday night. And we know how to call in planning or turn to Grady and say, hey, what, we need some information, you know, or we know how to do these things. Trust your citizens here. Trust your citizens. I think that Catherine's suggestions have been, they're, they're really good suggestions. So that's all I wanted to say is that I think that you have a wonderful opportunity. We can all go be adults and ask the right questions, search for the right information and come up with some sort of solution. And to Mayor Morris's point, we want to hear minority and majority. And so we can piece it together and see what's the best for the town, because that's actually where we want to be, is what's best for the town. So thank you very much. And thank you very much again, Mayor Royer. Oh, Vice Mayor Royer.
Vice Mayor. It's Vice Mayor all the way.
Mayor, that concludes the public comment for this item. You wrote number six for your agenda item. Do you want to speak for number five? Okay, come on up, Ron Sova.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm not here to promote myself one way or the other. I'm just here to remind you, and, and I've seen names being tossed on and off and about. And I would just, oh, sorry. Okay. And I would just like to see whoever you appoint on these committees. I wish you knew all of them and you could select the ones that would be very objective in addressing this issue. It is important. I would not like to see this issue be treated subjectively. I think whatever is decided should be for the best betterment of the town and not by any stretch of the imagination for individuals and their personal dislikes of what's going on or should be going on or where. It should be for the town. And you need to do that objectively. And I'd also point out, I think these people that are selected should have a good understanding of property rights as established by our constitution. And I think the people should have a good understanding of what Cave Creek is, a western town, a southwestern town, an equestrian town, and how it fits in to our general plan that was approved in twenty twenty one. So I hope that the people you put on this have those qualifications. I would only hope that you knew them so that you could make that informed decision. And it would be a balanced ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, now that concludes the public comment for this item.
Thank you, Carla. So I guess at, at this point, we are, we, any questions from council? Let's just make sure we've got all that cleared. And we're looking then for.
A motion.
A motion.
All right. You need the first one first before it goes down. So you can do the other one, get, get the modifications. So I'll do that if you want.
Well, you, you don't have to, the, whoever makes the motion does not have to make it with the people on there.
Right.
You, you're not constrained to the motion that's already, well, we're agendizing this.
Yeah, that can be a modification. I, I think what we need to do is approve this and then come back to the questions that the Vice Mayor had as a second motion, you know?
Look, let me, I, the, the chair is going to rule here and the ruling is, is that, that, that whoever makes the motion can make the motion they want to make. And if that includes these members or not, and then we'll have an opportunity for amendment after that. But we have to get started on this place somewhere.
Okay, well, I'm up.
You're up.
I move to recommend the task force members for the Morningstar Trail Task Force. Include Justine Fritz, Stacy Daniel, Lisa Greenman, Bill Bessor, Terry Smith, Jody Lesenby and Ernie Weber. As alternates on the task force, I recommend, or I move, Matt Hoppick, Beth Baumann and Tracy Davies be included.
Tracy Davies?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion or an alter, motion, either one.
I just have a question. So you're retaining five on the list and then suggesting two new players. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's Ernie Weber and Jody Lees.
Yes.
Four, four new players.
No, well, on the recommended.
Two on the, two on the committee and two, and two alternates.
Right.
Oh, okay. So I guess let me just continue the question with your permission. So if, are we doing the alternates right now? Also, it sounds like we are.
The motion said the alternates too, so that, that's on the floor.
Tell me the alternate list again.
The alternate is Matt Hoppick, Elizabeth Baumann and Tracy Davies.
Other other discussion? Yes, sir.
I truly appreciate that the process that was gone through was, would collect, would, would select a committee in which we would truly have majority, minority, and an attempt to balance. I'd certainly be more comfortable if I knew where these individuals were within that filtration process.
Well, Tom, can I respond?
Yeah, you may certainly.
I think that that speaks to Mr. Augerton's concern that we would kind of be setting up this task force per the way that people might vote. And I think that we should not do that. I think that it should be as neutral, even if those of you who are on this committee feel strongly about your positions. I'm sure you will enter into this task force membership trying to be as objective and neutral as possible. That's what we can hope for, all of us.
Okay, I hear you.
Comments from over here. Uh, my, my comment is I, I don't know a number of people on this list. I'd say almost half. So, and I mean, they're not going to make the final decision. If, if they do really, really good work, and I certainly think they will, looking at the ones I know, that they'll make good recommendations and we'll have all the facts out there and will make the very best decision, have the very best information to make the decision that, that for the whole town. So.
And if I may make another comment, I think everyone who has expressed interest either to you or with staff is to be commended for coming forward and making themselves available. This will not be, probably not be an easy task. I hope it's an easy task, but probably it will not. So I certainly want to give credit to those who have volunteered, whatever, you know, however they feel.
We've never had this many volunteers for you. It's a terrible job cutting it down to size. Uh, with that, since it's not financial, we'll take a voice vote and see if we have any dissenters. So all those in favor of the Vice Mayor's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? It passed a seven zero.
How about that?
It's not even eight o'clock. So good luck to the committee members.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, Ernie, which, which number am I on now?
You're on, we're going to go to six.
Six, alright, yeah. Council discussion, possible direction to staff regarding the development services work plan update presented by the development services director. This is for discussion, direction, and it has public.
Mayor and council, before our development services director gets underway, when I first came on, I heard from a number of council members, you know, that had an interest in a number of items that were under the lead of, of our development services director and the development services department. Number of things that might have come up at the strategic planning process that you underwent last fall. Also such things as state trust land and a number of other items. So in other communities I've worked in, we had departments do what I would call a, a council approved work plan. And that's what we're trying to do tonight, which is basically what I would call items of importance to the council, giving you an update on those. And then we would periodically come in and do refinements and come back and show the progress that we've made on those since the last time we've done an update. This is your opportunity to ask questions of, of Luke and also if there's something you think that might not be, something that might be missing on the list or, or for an update that's related to what we have on the work plan. I think Luke has done a really good job of identifying a lot of these and I worked with him on this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Luke, who will go ahead and, and give a, a brief presentation before you tonight.
Thank you, Town Manager. Mayor, members of council, just before I begin, this, the work plan is essentially really derived from the joint work session of the town council and planning commission that was held, I believe, last June. Yeah, June twentieth. And if you recall, staff came back September eighteenth of last year with those items that were identified as critical and gave kind of staff's background and update on those items. Since Grady joining our team, we had talked through the, this work plan and trying to itemize all of those and put together kind of a priority list of where those items stand and what's the status of them is. So this isn't really an exhaustive or complete representation of everything that staff obviously works on, on a day-to-day basis and all the conversations we have about the balloonous amount of projects going on and, and conversations we have. But this is really going, just starting at the top, something that was identified multiple times is the acquisition of Cave Creek Rodeo Grounds. As you're aware, the, that land is federal land owned in by Bureau of Land Management. Maricopa County subleases or late leases from BLM. The piece of the rodeo grounds as well as an additional approximately two hundred acres from BLM, and then they subleased to us the twenty plus or minus acres of the rodeo grounds. In conversations with Maricopa County, we, we decided that Maricopa County would serve as the lead to petition BLM to issue a patent for the land. At such time, county would dedicate the rodeo grounds over to the town. Unfortunately, or fortunately, county has a lot of experience in dealing with BLM to get a patent issued. And this is something that once again, RJ will be able to update you when he's, when he's here, May twentieth, presenting to the council. But because of their experience with BLM, they're, they're taking the lead on this. Unfortunately, it's a, a lengthy process that could take upwards of a year, a year plus to have consummated with BLM. As you're aware, the biggest issue for county to move forward in obtaining the patent related to restrooms and having public facilities out there to host public events, that is the mission of BLM and that property specific. So that is done at least. So county was able to move ahead and file their application in November. Uh, the next item is the.
Quick question.
Yes.
I don't understand filing a patent on a piece of land. Is that standard?
That is the standard terminology used, yes. It, it would, it would be akin to issuing a deed. That is the standard terminology used, yes. It it would it would be akin to um issuing a deed or yes, but they use the.
I looked it up. All the homestead land in this country was issued by patents. It is the highest form of ownership that exists because the sovereign issues it. And so it's straight from the president, I guess, or someone.
It's like a Spanish land brand.
I mean, it's as good as it gets.
Alrighty, that explains.
You get what you get.
Very good. I asked.
Uh, the next item is.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
Um, could the mayor get on the agenda for the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and take Mayor Bunch with them down there? And could Mayor Bunch, after introductions, present the importance and the history of this issue before his term was over to try to get a little bit higher priority by the county to work with? This is something going on for so long. And can we get you on the agenda and can we get him on the agenda as well and go down and do just a brief presentation? And I think the history would be of interest to the supervisors and might increase the county staff's attention to the issue.
I don't know. We have such a good relationship with RJ.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, okay.
It it may be counterproductive if they get angry if if when you go around them.
No, you'd have to go through chain of command, but it just seems to me we have an opportunity to have a guy tell a story that I think would lend some historical character to them.
And it's. Counsel, if I may, what I think I'm understanding, Luke, is it's not eighteen months on the part of the county. It's the federal government that that takes the time on this, correct?
And yes, and I
Congress.
And I have um offered to leverage that muscle on the town's behalf and and county is at this point um fairly confident that working their channels, they should get movement. But they do have other projects, other park areas that they're looking to have patents issued on that have taken a very long time. Um, I think because the town is is kind of in a a subservient role um as part of our sublease, it gives us a little bit more credence to move ahead of the line. But once again, staff has offered um wheelbarrowing down any any tool or form of leverage that we can to speed this up. And and I I would defer to to RJ on this as the the process moving forward. But thank you.
Could I ask one question before we move to the next one? Luke, what did the what did we had to do all the improvements? What did the county have to improve on that other hundred and eighty acres?
You referring to the regional park itself?
To the to the two the two hundred, two hundred uh total of patent, you said two hundred acres, and we're gonna get twenty of it. What did the county do to that other hundred and eighty? Or did we have to do all the work to get there?
This is part of their campgrounds.
Okay, alright. I knew there had to be something else. Okay.
Uh, questions or comments from council? This is a discussion only. So this is uh, this is our. Any questions? Okay, there's public comment on this?
No request to speak.
Okay, so no further business on this. Thank you, Luke.
Actually, that was just the first item.
That was the item on the table. There's like three pages.
I told you I'm looping.
But we're okay with that if that's.
Yeah. So the the next item is the Town Core Plan Update, uh, and I I believe council's been following this. Uh, the Planning Commission held a workshop uh back in May of twenty twenty-three. Um, we kind of round tabled ideas and suggestions about the the um Town Core Plan moving forward. Um, held a formal kickoff meeting on October nineteenth. Um, held the first of two public input meetings, one October twenty-sixth and the next November sixteenth. Planning Commission uh began its review based on that public input. Um, later that evening on November sixteenth, public hearing was held December twenty-first. Uh, Planning Commission recommended a draft. Uh, what went into that draft was really something that hadn't been done um when we did the two thousand twelve uh Town Core Plan, the last draft of the Town Core Plan, which is um really including uh Utilities Director, the Town Engineer, um uh Jim Chief Ford in kind of a comprehensive look at the town core itself and how all of the different things related to infrastructure kind of uh go into the town core itself. So uh, those were some some big changes and and a lot of the additions kind of making the document more robust that the Planning Commission recommended. Following the Planning Commission's recommend recommendation, we sent out referral referral agency notice. Um, and that deadline has come and gone um for input uh ending March eighteenth. At this point, um, staff is uh looking at when to bring that before the the Town Council. Uh, it's important to note that the adoption of the Town Core Plan is by resolution and it does not require voter approval or ratification. Then um what the Town Core Plan does do, uh, really what at what's at its core is it identifies areas requiring further study and or improvement, and those may lead to C I P or budgetary consideration in the future. Um, so stay tuned with that one. We've got that scheduled to come back before council um here in the next couple of months.
Mayor, on that topic too, um, the mayor and I were just talking today about it's about time to have another uh roundtable or a business group meeting, and I think that this would be perfect to actually bring back one final time before we take it to council for its adoption. So this would be one of the agenda items, I think, along with some of the other topics we have traditionally used with that group. So does that sound like something you guys would be up for?
I worry that a lot of people don't even know it exists right now. Um, uh, how widespread is knowledge of what's in the town?
I will say our uh public input meetings were actually fairly well attended in in my history in doing these. Um, I did also, our staff also um solicited independent uh stakeholder feedback from business owners in the town and property owners in the town core um and just had, you know, conversations, you know, showed them different um uh sections of it and got and solicited their feedback, which all informed the presentation of the Planning Commission and the considerations that they made in their draft recommendation. So um as as much as we could, we were exhausted. We we did a webpage um where there's still an open email channel. So if anyone's sitting out in the audience and wants to review the the Planning Commission recommended draft, you can still send me an email and it gets read and part of the public record, so.
Grady, do you have any suggestions on how to get that information out before we actually vote on it?
We could actually do a couple of different things. I mean, we could do um really gun shy about open houses, but we'll have to call him something else. Um, but we could we could certainly do that. That's always a good type of thing, some sort of form of public meetings. Um, I think it's very important for the public to to obviously weigh in on this. Um, I know that the staff has done a really good job of trying to reach out, but it's just one of those things that people probably don't really get or understand what the significant impact is. So I I definitely think that's one way. And I also think definitely the business community that are most impacted by it. They definitely, that's why I suggest when we have that meeting, that's more of a smaller group setting. Um, I'm not sure we're gonna try to get into the full details, but I think what Luke could do is just kind of cover the the main topics that are in it and just kind of get, you know, in a bulleted fashion and get their input as well.
I was thinking maybe another five minute video. And that way we could kind of show people what it what we have in mind.
Not a bad idea. I I think that's a good idea, actually. So we could certainly do that. So. Let's.
I could do the voiceover.
Oh, you're I see. You're looking for the opportunity to do that. Um, I'll work with I'll work with Luke and Ben on that. I think that's that's a really good idea.
You know, it's it helps people visualize uh what we're what we currently have versus what we had in mind.
I know a number of cities do that with their general plan process, so I think it's a good idea.
I'm not running for reelection. I'll do the voiceover for it.
Kill things for sure.
East Texas.
The so the next next item on this work plan uh is related to the medians and uh Councilman Augerson's favorite subject and something that's near and dear to me as well. Um, the we've gone out and uh contracted with two local landscape contractors and and architects about um putting together, providing recommendations to enhance the medians. Uh, council will be presented a report and recommendation at an upcoming meeting. Uh, it sounds like we're um going to be on for June seventeenth to have that. And I've seen drafts of their report and it's very well done and council will really have a a good um bevy to choose from and how to proceed and how to tackle this uh if if enhancing medians is is something we want to consider moving forward. Um, I just will note that uh we've transplanted uh nearly two hundred native cacti, yucca, and succulents to various medians within the town core to date. Um, a lot of those have come off of various job work sites, uh, the food bank being one of them, the Arroyo Road um improvement uh being a large uh contributor. Um, I think we even uh is Sean still on the call?
No.
Think we even uh helped ourselves to a few off of the interconnect site without him looking, so. Um, anywhere where we can get uh transplantable material that's that's readily available and relocated to those we're doing. And as you'll see from the report, um, it's important to really go back and see how our medians were first installed and the process by which they're in their current condition, because I think that really more than anything else tells a story about what we need to do moving forward. If we decide to do nothing at all, it's very important to to note that. Um, I'll move along then, Brian, if there's if anyone. Okay. Uh, parking in the town core. Uh, we have been conducting our annual fire inspections with all the commercial businesses and posting occupancies. Um, the engineering, you know, Hal and and his team have been installing curbing and associated pathways to reduce illegal on-street parking during nights and weekends. And we've also been working with business community to provide additional parking areas. Um, I I just put on here that the work plan says, you know, what's your target end date? And um, you know, I think back to Ian and and even before, I I don't think parking in the town will ever cease to be, you know, considered of critical need in the town, and that's not a bad thing. I think that's really what sets us apart from from neighboring jurisdiction is is kind of the the vibrancy and the demand to come up to Cave Creek. And and as someone that's been here um my whole life, I think that's really unique and something that um I hope continues. Um, what I will say is something that's not on here, but more of a recent development. Um, the Buffalo Chip is set to begin work on on their parking lot this summer. Um, we've actually been in contact with her with a contractor doing the work, which usually means if a contractor's on the bill, they're getting ready to do work. So that's a promising um development that's going.
Where would their parking be? Because they have a relatively small footprint.
Is correct. Uh, so they recently acquired um a little over an acre of land at the base of Brenner Hill um along Viola Lane back there. The Town Council rezoned that several years ago for the express purpose of parking. Um, Buffalo Chip has since uh purchased that, acquired that, and is going to be expanding their parking area.
From that area, is it relatively easy to get to the Buffalo Chip? Do they have to go way around the other?
Yes, they're.
Establishment.
Yes, but in all likelihood, um likely after the uh fiscal year begins, uh, there will be a pathway extension that we'll be bringing back to council to to connect that to Cave Creek Road just down that um right away that we have. So.
So I got a I've got a question. Could, when we have the meeting with the uh uh with the businesses, could we start talking maybe about a public-private partnership for a parking garage? I mean, at the end of the day, if we want to promote our businesses in town, we as the Town Council or previous Town Councils allowed people to expand without enough parking. That unfortunately is now on our plate. So I think we need to shift some of the cost back to them, and let's see if we can do a public-private partnership to solve the problem.
So noted. Yep. Okay, uh, the next the next item, uh, the Arizona State Land Department Open Space um reported to council just recently. The the only update I have for this is that the R F P deadline is, I I believe I said next week earlier, it's actually the ninth. So what is that, Thursday? So it'll be Thursday.
So have we gotten responses yet?
We have. I've spoken to um two potential um respondents out about of a a list of eight that it went out to directly from A S L D's list.
Okay, thank you.
So Luke, uh, likelihood probably will miss the second council meeting, but maybe the first one in June for the award of the contract.
Yeah, and 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 my goal with the timing, um, Town Manager, Mayor, members of council, was uh because I am leaving um uh family trip to Australia at the end of this month, uh, my goal was to have everything with the contract and and everything um ready to go and put on an agenda uh in my stead. So it should be pretty straightforward based on um what we've done, so. I, like I said, it won't be delayed because I'll be at it soon. Uh, the next item is the uh native plant ordinance and um this was, I I recall the conversation about this from the work session and subsequently September eighteenth uh council meeting. Um, we're working on on getting more proactive and more selective with what information we put out to the general public. It's no secret that uh as property values have increased, um there's been a kind of a churn, residential churn, and a lot of people from other places coming in here and Cave Creek is desirable, and I don't begrudge anyone for wanting to live here. Um, but a lot of the same uh ethos that the town was kind of founded and rooted in based on our um native plant preservation and salvage requirements, uh, the the limited amount of disturbance that can be done to a property that's whole foot native habitat quarter, all all different cogs in the wheel of of trying to preserve the desert and and really maintain, really, I mean, at the end of the day, property values. Um, met with Brenda Olive with um the Desert Awareness Committee. Um, she's she's been very good at at drafting different things over the over time that really promote keeping things natural and native and and all those things. And hopefully she can help um on robotic size, if that's a word. Uh, typically what I churn out in a document that's that's given out to the public and make it a little bit more um user-friendly, reader-friendly on on what to do and and how to follow the rules and regulations that we have and why they're important. Really, I think that's the other side of the coin is is explaining why those rules are in place and and why they're important and what they do. So that's something, you know, especially from a firewise uh standpoint, um uh Chief Ford sent me to the Firewise uh school and I became a Firewise certified um inspector. Um, so I I know both sides. You don't have to save every plant, but if you save enough of them, you'll be happier. So um, those are the things that we're working on as far as the native plan ordinance and better communicating it to the public.
And I have a question about that. As as time has gone on, have we had an increase in the number of people who are uh landscaping with non-native plants?
Mayor, members of council, I think it's it's really a a combination of factors. Um, I think the but number one, first and foremost, the fires of twenty twenty are still seared pretty raw in a lot of our our memories. And a lot of the messaging that came out of those um two events was defensible space, defensible space. And you don't hear the the back half of it, you know, it's you don't need to rent a skid and go around your property and clear everything out. That's not really what we're saying. So we we saw a lot of that. We, you know, we saw a lot of mass grading and disturbance beyond uh what's permitted. And then the other is, yeah, a lot of people from other places that like a certain uh look of certain trees from where they're from, and they want to bring that look to the to here. And um, it just, it's unfortunate that a lot of those are on our prohibited uh list. So it's really the education and and trying to stay in front of it. But as you're, as a lot of us are aware, is education, we can offer it. It's really people wanting to to take us up on it. So it's we need to get, you know, I I know there's a lot of important things that go out in our mailers um when we send those out on a quarterly basis or or biannual basis. Um, I'm always trying to plug for more landscaping and lighting information in those, but there's, you know, other information that's important to communicate to the residents as well. So it's it's trying to fight for that time.
Mr. Mayor, I just a couple of questions for Luke. Um, I actually have a question for Bill, but um, Luke, what I'm gonna be asking the attorney is. Luke, what I'm going to be asking the attorney is about what happens if there is not compliance with native plants? What is the recommended response from the town? First off in Cave Creek, if you're blading, you need a blade permit. So we have a problem with people even getting blading permits. And prior to the fire, we've had people, not mentioning my neighborhood or my streets, but we've had people who blade pin-to-pin, which under any definition is not permitted. Bill, just a quick question for you, not to put you on the spot, but because maybe it has to be researched, but what would be a responsible community's response for someone who comes in and substantially disregards the native plant protection ordinance, which is the setback, the 25% undisturbed and so forth? And when this takes place, is it too late and we just accept it or are there fines or is there mitigation to restore?
Deny the building permit. Because you'll never build their building.
What would be the alternative to that?
And that's vacant. That's why, that's how you enforce it.
Is that a measured response?
Then they have to restore it. I mean, right now, your enforcement mechanism is to deny the building permit. And if they wish to have a building permit, which I assume they do, then they've got to restore the native vegetation.
If I may, my experience has been that people, this, people get a building permit, they follow all the regulations, staff does an excellent job of making sure they follow the regulations. And once they got their building permit and they move in, then they make changes and some of those changes would not.
That's more difficult. I agree.
That's more difficult, yeah.
What about the time of property transfer here in Cave Creek? Before you're able to close, and there's real estate experts here, which I don't pretend to be, but before you can close your property, if you're on septic, you have to be going through the approval process. What about at the time of property transfer? Years ago, we used to have land as aerial surveys fly over and they were looking for illegal building here in the town, garages and outbuildings and things like that. But in an age of satellite imagery and drones and everything else, is there no way for the town to get a point in time snapshot of a property? And then at the time of property transfer, have that as the baseline performance grade period? So then even after someone buys the land and builds a property, that what maybe began as 100% vegetation and the setbacks are observed and the constructions observed and so forth. I mean, I guess what I'm asking is if there's no enforcement and there's no post-destruction compliance, is, what does that mean? I mean, when people blade pin-to-pin, and I mean, where is the failure? Is it failure with the town that we didn't get a blading permit upfront and blading took place anyway? Or is it failure to observe the blading once it's been permitted to look for compliance? With somebody's large acreages, this is not like a little deal. This is, in one case, you know, seven acres, on the case, two and a half acres. And it just seems like, I don't know, I feel like the native plant protection work done by other people who are no longer here is orphaned and in dire need of more than just flyers on town hall. And I'm not saying there should be, you know, denial of building permit. It just seems like we're losing more the original desert, the varnish and all the other things that the naturalists speak about faster than we can respond to or mitigate. And I think the flyers are great, but I just think that from the moment that the property transfers, we should codify what's there. And then if there's changes going forward, the town still, or does the town not have authority? I guess we don't.
If I, if I may, I mean, having worked in other communities, basically this is a code violation. And so they get a notice of code violation and they're told what they need to do to remedy it. And they're given so much time to do it. And if they choose to ignore us, then we can basically take this to our municipal court and go through that process. Now, I don't know, I don't know what's here, but I'm saying where I've worked before, that's how that would be handled. We had very similar, we had a hillside protection easement. We also had the vegetation had to be protected, the native vegetation. We actually had somebody realign one of our trails because they thought it was getting too close to their home. And they destroyed all the vegetation and then replanted their vegetation where the trail previously was. And we ended up, they ended up having to pay a fortune to get it, because they spent on a lot of money on a professional landscaper to do what they did. And they settled with us, but they had to restore everything back the way it was and realign the trail. So there are hammers that we have, tools that we can use, but you have to kind of go through the due process. And it's, you know, you do the notice of violation and you start off there. Now, the question is, the intelligence and surveillance and how is that going to happen? It's mostly, you know, by neighbors reporting this to us. We don't have the ability or we don't have the staffing to go and try to be proactive and discover this when it happens. And that Tom brought up a really good point. This typically happens not so much at the time of construction, it's after somebody's people have moved in or the house has moved, or I'm sorry, the the residents have moved out and it's new people coming in and they just assume that they can just blade and clear the whole area, not realizing that they're in violation of our ordinances. So I hope I answered and I'm sorry, you were trying to jump in and I apologize for cutting you off.
That's okay. What Grady just mentioned, you've had this discussion before, is how do you wish to enforce your code? Is it complaint-based or surveillance? And historically, I think you've been by and large complaint-based. I think you started down a good path. If indeed the property hasn't, doesn't have a building permit, you deny the building permit. Tom then pointed out, well, what happens after they get the building permit? Then I think you could deny a C of O. Now, now, now they're in and they take out the vegetation. You're asking for a sort of an overarching to look at your town, I think where Grady's going is probably the better, you cite them continually and they go to magistrate court. That would be the simpler approach. So the first is no, no building permit, second, no C of O. Third would be, would have to be complaint-based. And then you would, because you're not going to have Adam going out and inventorying all the cactus.
Sure.
And so, but if someone says, I've seen, I've seen code violations here. A code enforcement officer can go and cite him to magistrate court. That would be the best, that would be the best approach, the most effective and cheapest approach.
If I could just ask one last rapid question. When we issue a blading permit, what's realistic with the resources we have to ensure complacent compliance or? I mean, you know, for example, if somebody's getting a building permit, they have to do a topo map. And there was a time we had to identify existing native vegetation and we used to measure the drip canopy and a caliper. I mean, I, maybe that's all not around anymore, but it was pretty severe before you could build your house. The topo we always saw was kind of odd, but when we went from that to like now, it just seems incomprehensible, blading pin-to-pin.
Luke, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. Councilmember Argerton, we do not issue a grading permit. The, all the permits that we, the town issues are related to construction or development. Very rarely does someone come in and obtain or ask for a permit to, you know, clear out, you know, any, any manner of their property. Fences, walls, all of those types of things, there's typically grading associated with that. And that's what we're looking for. We're asking them to identify their property corners so that we can verify they're not going on a neighbor's property with grading. That they, they rope off the limits of disturbance and disturbance is defined as anywhere where natural grade is going to be altered or native vegetation is going to be removed. We go out and at that point, do an inspection of in residential zones, the native cactus, because native cactus are protected. However, trees are not in residential zones. So those are all tagged and marked and if they're going to do a salvage area, they've got to show us where that's going to be and all those things. And that's, those are commonly associated with, I'd say the big ones, which are new homes, barns, mare motels, arenas, detached garage, RV garage. Those are typically the ones that we're doing really an exhaustive from, you know, cradle to grave of that permit, having eyes out there. But to, but to Tom's point, it's, it's, you know, we finalize the permit, they moved in, they're using their improvements. In six months, they decided to put it on the market and sell it and someone else comes in and says, well, geez, why is there a swath of desert between my house and my RV garage? I don't want that there. And they remove it. We're we're not aware of it unless we're being told that it's happening or we're doing an inspection and we're in the neighborhood and we see it. And that's really the nature.
A blading permit to proactively? Like if somebody wanted to blade, is it the construction that kicks in the process, but blading does not?
Well, our ordinance prohibits mass grading.
To your question, councilmember, it's part of the building permit.
Right.
The grading is done as part of.
Oh, okay. So no separate permit for blading?
Right.
We used to have that. We don't have it.
Most cities do have, I wouldn't call it, you know, blading, but I'd call a grading permit. And most cities, other cities and towns have that, but it's not to say what we're doing is wrong, it's just that that's very common elsewhere.
Luke, will there be any benefit to having a permit prior to the disturbance of a lot, prior to activity? Or is that redundant bureaucracy that is burdensome?
The, your second one.
Really?
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Right, because now we're allowing a property owner, say it's 20 acres, to come in and grade and grub 20 acres. And then the housing market changes, their desires to construct change and they sell it and move on. And we're staring at a 20-acre swath of land that's been graded on our, on our permit. And there's no recourse for revegetation or any of those manner of things. They're in the wind at that point. So, yeah, we like the site disturbance to be associated with an actual development, something that's going to be a constructive result. It's just an easier way for staff.
Sorry, I didn't mean to belabor this for so much time. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Anything else on the native plant ordinance? Move on to the general plan areas 18 and 10, the mixed-use areas. Based on the September 18th public hearing, staff was directed to meet with Sora West residents to determine what they want developed on those properties. I believe Carol Perry was mentioned to call myself and set up a meeting. I've actually talked to Carol Perry since, not about this though. So we're at this point, just just holding on.
I mean, you're going to need to call her.
I, okay.
I mean, that's.
We do have one. That's up to the mayor.
Yeah, let's, let's get rolling.
Okay. The next item. Absolutely. And it applies to the people that actually own the properties in there as well. Anybody is free to make contact with staff and initiate. Right. Okay. Yeah, any, it's not just, it's not just for Carol, it's anybody that wants to call staff and talk about areas 10 and areas 18, I'm willing to just talk with.
Suggestion is reach out to them because most of them aren't going to reach out to you. But if you get the names of two or three people, I believe that
Okay.
Julie Goldammer can give you, you know, some names, some phone numbers and just reach out to them. Otherwise, we're going to be screwing around with this for another six or nine months.
The next item is the commercial buffer zoning category renaming. The minutes reflected that council wanted the planning commission to make a recommendation on renaming it. That hasn't been on a planning commission agenda since that conversation. It is important to note that the planning commission had previously recommended it be changed to intermediate commercial back in 2022. That's something that if council wishes, we can, staff can discuss with the planning commission at their next meeting. So this is one of those areas where I, staff would like direction on how to proceed or just leave it as it is. Let the sleeping dog lie, as it were.
I'd like to comment on this one. And I'm sure Luke wants to hear this again. So so when we first talked about this, one of the comments was there aren't that many properties left that would be affected.
Right.
And I think as you drive up Cave Creek Road now, you can see that redevelopment is starting to happen in, in a number of places. And this question about buffering between commercial uses and residential uses is still a question. And that's all I really need to say. I think you know the rest.
You've mentioned redevelopment?
Yes.
Do you have specific examples?
Well, you could start with the tumbleweed.
Okay. And end at the tumbleweed? There's her.
Yeah, I think I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
You know, Luke, actually, I think that maybe this could be an issue when the area 10 and area 18 people get together with us. And it could be a logical segue into their discussion because they're the ones who have the most at stake, I think, on this issue.
Yes, and really, I mean, the, the nice thing, I'll just leave it there, but the nice thing about the, the ability to rezone those remaining eight parcels that are within area 18 is the ability to essentially create your, your own acceptable uses to where it doesn't necessarily have to fit in the commercial buffer box or the general commercial box or the town core, obviously not town core commercial, but those are our three commercial zoning categories. So it gives, you know, the council and the public the opportunity to not be pinned to a name per se, but more the underpinnings of what uses would be acceptable.
And that land use piece is also really a big part of it. I just want to say here that commercial buffer, in my view, has been a disaster for the town. It's way too broad. And I know you've told me it can't be changed because the state lands. But I don't think renaming solves that problem.
Right.
So renaming is rather trivial, in my view, but.
Then, yes, to your point, the name can be altered. It's the uses that that are associated with that. You can't go in and start ripping those out and gutting that, that chapter of the zoning ordinance because that would, would not bode well for the town and the diminution of value with the state land department for that. I'll, I'll try to be brief and wrap these up. The next one, annual joint town council planning commission meeting. The first was held in June of 2023, as we discussed. And council and commission had discussed doing this annually. Staff would say.
Stop for a moment. Brian. We didn't got to.
I'm done in two seconds. I promise. Really, it's the balls in council and Teresa's not here to argue otherwise, but staff's thought was February of each year. If you wanted to do something still this year, because we didn't obviously do it in February, we would just let the town manager and the town clerk decide when, when that would be a good time to schedule the commission and council to do that. The last three or four are all really utilities and the subdivision ordinance. And I put no action necessary because they're either prohibited or no consensus was reached to change any uses. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
On the subdivision private streets, I, I'm, we have that completely opposite what I thought we were going to do. I thought we want, if a subdivision wants to keep the streets and save us the money, why would we not do that?
That's exactly, they're, they're right, is they can request that the streets be private and it would be council's discretion to allow.
They're going to be private rather than them making the choice. They can make the choice, but how, but then are you going to accept HOAs in gated communities? That's the question. Well, we don't have to put the gates on there. Well, but they're, no, they're going to say, if we're maintaining the road, I don't want the public in there. Don't build it. Well, then, well, that, so then, that's why it doesn't work. Our rules are nothing. All right, let's, let's move on here. Brian wants to go.
Thank you, Luke.
Thanks. Presentation of quarterly fire and emergency medical review.
We had one public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the side of it, it was David. Okay, David Phelps is sparing you. Okay, David Phelps is sparing you.
Brian, I apologize for keeping you waiting so long. You're a, you're an important fellow.
I have been through many public meetings and know what, how hard it is to do your job. So apologies are necessary.
We had to pull him away from the house earlier to get him here. Mayor and council, um, good evening. We're here to do the uh, third quarter report for the fire and EMS um, activities here in the town. I'm just gonna, the first thing I want to say is I think the last time I was before you, somebody, I don't remember who it was, had asked me, how many calls does the region, the automatic aid run in a year? And I had that number. It's uh, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred calls is dispatched either by Phoenix or Mesa. So it's very, very busy, second only to uh, pretty much Fire Department of New York. So that was a, a question was asked last time. Uh, we're gonna go through this fairly quickly, so stop me if there's something uh, specific that you want to talk about. Brian. Turn this to everybody can see it a little better. Um, you have the list of incident types and how many calls you went on in the last quarter. Um, basically um, a hundred and eighty total incidents in the quarter year to date. We've gone over five hundred and fifty. We average about sixty-two incidents per month. Um, engine one forty-seven responses. That's from the town of Cave Creek's uh, station and engineer. The company training is underneath that. You can see that these guys and gals have been doing quite a lot of training. Um, a lot of that is contributed to the change in special operations trainings that they just did and got the, the grants for. And chief can talk about that um, when we get to there. Here's the uh, overview just by chart of the types of calls. And this hasn't changed much. Um, about two thirds of our, or three quarters of our calls are medical, emergency medical services, which is why it's important for our staffing to have the two medics on the truck. Um, and then the two EMTs that support that. And then just the comparison for you between the third quarter and then the year to date. So they, it changes a little bit each quarter, but it stays pretty consistent that the far and away, our most often type of request is for medical services, emergency medical services. Um, I'm just looking at it anecdotally. Our number one call for medical services is falls. So that might be something we have to look at down the road a little bit. Maybe there's some outreach that we can do to the community to assist with falling, but we have a lot of falls in this town. So just as an anecdote. Um, here's the, kind of the, the big items for the third quarter um, by month. Uh, January, again, we got the fire station going. Uh, we moved the crews into the temporary facility. I don't think we looked at the temporary facility when, when we did the tour. Um, but if you want to go take a look at that, and I'm sure the crews over there will allow you to tour through it if you like. Um, we turned the station site over with an understanding that they'll get on it and get that, the facility moving. And they are, in my opinion, doing a fantastic job there. The trusses went up today with the exception of the last two. So the trusses went on the Big Bay today. Um, in February, uh, Kerry retired and we welcomed Grady Miller, and he's been really nice to me since I got on here, since he got here. So I appreciate that. I can be a I've been known to be a burr under the saddle at times, so I appreciate that. We uh, participated in the chief office executive training. We're still part of the whole region and the state stuff that happens. The state of the uh, town presentation, which I thought went very well. Uh, March, again, we did our second, or our first community brush collection day. We did the second one in April. Some of this will ru- run over a little bit. The rodeo parade, we thought was a, a great event. Uh, Rancho Minano Firewise Community, which we talked about a little earlier, was officially submitted in March and, and approved by both the state and the national folks. Um, Bike Week was very busy and we thought that that went well, especially with the coordination between us and the marshal and the sheriffs and the Daisy Mountain folks that are on type. And then uh, um, it's a busy special event season. And so we're, we are um, doing, I, I know at a couple of meetings, people have said we wanted to be, be active up here and we are active up here. We looked at a lot of special events, um, even though they're contained. And then chief, I wanted you to talk real, real quickly about April fifth. You uh, put in, in position squad one forty-one. I know it's outside of the first quarter, but that's a technical rescue and then the uh, open house, if you want to touch base real quick.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Jim and mayor members of council. On April fifth, fifth, we were finally able to uh, put in service a fully equipped dual uh, capable uh, special heavy rescue unit. That station, that unit is uh, housed currently at New River Road and Circle Mountain, our station one forty-one. That uh, unit now has hazardous materials trained personnel and technical rescue trained personnel on one unit. In our system, it's called a squad. It's a statewide resource that responds to uh, incidents around the state. If necessary, it's funded by federal tax dollars that come in through this, through the uh, state. And we sent twelve of our firefighters that were already hazardous materials trained to the technical rescue training. That unit will be the, i- is the closest technical rescue unit to the Spur Cross area here in the town of Cave Creek. So when we do have uh, mountain rescues or technical rescues here in the town of Cave Creek, the unit from Daisy Mountain at Circle Mountain and Seventh Street would be the first arriving technical rescue unit. So we're pretty proud of the fact that we were able to uh, fully complement that unit and train our, our twelve members up to a much higher level. It took uh, there was eight weeks worth of additional training that they went through, including helicopter operations, water rescue, heavy rescue, collapse rescue, variety of different things that brought them up to this level. So we're pretty proud of that. That happened, if you recall, on the heels of Phoenix moving their technical rescue unit that used to be at the fire station on Cave Creek Road south of Carefree Highway. They moved that unit further into the core of Phoenix. So that unit used to be your first arriving technical rescue unit in town. So when that, when that void occurred, we tried to fill it as quickly as we could with this unit. Of course, we have lots of help from our partners in, in Scottsdale as well that have technical rescue support, but we were pretty proud to get that uh, in service on April fifth. And it was just recently, ironically, uh, dispatched to the town of Wickenburg, uh, where they spent about twelve hours offloading an LPG tank that was underground and leaking. So we, we are a uh, system wide and outside the automatic aid system responding resource because the state gives us through federal dollars, the money to invest in these things so that we can help our communities with their tax dollars. And then on uh, on April eighth, um, we conducted in our jurisdiction, a open house community uh, meeting for the members uh, that, for the residents that live in East Desert Hills and West Cave Creek, so that they could see what our plans were for building fire station one forty-four, which is will be on the corner of twenty-fourth street and Cloud, uh, twenty-four, two East Cloud. It was a very well attended meeting. Uh, some of you attended that, including the town manager and Jim, and I know councilman Bunch was there. W- we uh, let them know what the plan was. We've had a sign up on the lot for about a year and a half. Came down for a short amount of time after it was tagged by vandals. We put it back up again, announced the meeting, and we're pretty proud of the fact that we are, are moving forward with a four bay uh, twelve bedroom fire station at twenty-fourth street and Cloud, starting in construction about November of this year. Uh, we're hoping that that would be completed by November of next year, fully staffed and ready to run calls uh, next fiscal year.
As, as you are pretty well aware, I, what I put this up there just for a quick discussion. This was the incident um, in the town of Cave Creek on Saturday. Um, it came out at two fifteen. It was a brush alarm, first alarm, and that was a brush fire first alarm, which meant that there were structures um, in threatened, being threatened, or they had five structures that were threatened. Um, on your screen, you can see the units that went, and E stands for an engine company, a four person engine company, brush is a brush truck, a T is a tanker. Um, a B C is a battalion chief, a ladder is L, northeast deputy is N E D C utility. That all was dispatched initially on this call because it came out as an urban interface wildland incident. That was the second brush fire that we, we were dispatched to that day. The very first one um, happened in the morning and I wrote down the time. I don't know what it was. I think it was about nine or ten o'clock. It was a Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road on the northeast corner. Uh, our units responded, controlled the fire, turned it over to Royal Metro, since that's in the town of Carefree. It's not in the town of Cave Creek. But we did stop the, the spread and, and back off. They went back there yesterday morning again for same area for another fire. This time Royal Metro was on the scene handling it, so our crews didn't assist. And in between uh, the first fire and this second fire that I put up here tonight, um, we did a, a, a mountain rescue, trail rescue. Um, the, uh, the sheriffs flew out two people and a dog that had gotten too far out and could not make it back. And so they flew them out to the helicopter pad where the crews evaluated them and then sent them home. So the very busy Saturday for our, our crews up here. Yes.
Those people, did they call in on a phone? How did you find out about the, the emergency?
Boy, I, you know, I don't know it, because it, initial calls all, if even of it is phone, it goes to the sheriff's department. And so then the sheriff's department uh, notifies us and then sends our helicopters. They like to make the rescues with their helicopters first out there.
Jim, there was a comment made earlier tonight that um, there isn't an ordinance that affects people who start these fires, you know, unintentionally, obviously, but do we have one? Does anything exist?
The, the way that the current ordinance is, and we can talk about this, I can bring it back for study session to mayor and council, is if it's determined to be a stage one fire risk, then you're required to get a permit and you're required to let the town know that you're doing hot work and things like that. We um, last week, and we were not in a stage one situation yet. There's no restrictions at all with the forest. We've talked to the forest. We talked to the other jurisdictions. We had internally had had discussions. And in fact, we had decided that uh, today, we were gonna bring up additional responses and we were gonna have the discussions about bringing our staffing up at kind of Cave Creek. Typically, that uh, staffing for the brush truck occurs around Memorial Day weekend, the labor um, or the holiday, but we had already talked and we're bringing up the resources ahead of that. So we have to determine internally um, if it's a stage one or stage two fire risk. The reason it hasn't been called yet is because our temperatures have been less than they had like last year. And yeah, we did have some winds over the weekend, but we also had rain here about two weeks ago. So the, the weather itself, all that plays into it, and we had not made that call yet. If we make that call, then that's a, a different, then we have an opportunity to follow up with it and possibly um, issue a citation or, or issue a, a warning on that.
You do have an ordinance. It's only, as, as Jim points out, it's only implicated if you have the stage one and stage two, which is determined by your staff. You don't necessarily have to rise it, arise only out of a permit. If indeed someone commits the act and that someone admits to it, they one, be subject to, to, to a five hundred dollar penalty through the magistrate court, but most importantly, they, they can be cited for expenses. And so you do have an ordinance, but it's only implicated during the stage one and stage two. That stage one and stage two is determined, I think, by your building official?
It's, it's by our building and fire official who right now is uh, Luke is a temporary one, so I'm helping him out with that. Um, but we, again, we look at the region and um, the only thing that's happened in the region so far is uh, Phoenix with their trails has said if it's over a hundred degrees, you can't take your dogs on it, but that's as far as it's gotten uh, the tunnel or nobody else has determined where the high fire risk yet.
Well, maybe that'll change because I think the, with the kind of brush loading we have, why don't we just set it from April fifteenth to whatever? Now, I'm not sure we have to staff for all that, but we do need to know when people are out there starting fires. We, we have absolutely got to get the degree of negligence stopped with well, uh, what's the word on the bus?
Punitive damages?
Yeah, we, we've got to get some, get somebody's attention here. And if uh, we have a failure here um, of the system that we had a big fire in a high wind position that right in the middle of town that could have gotten structures, it could have gotten people. And our, our procedures did not work. We did not have the, the permitting system in effect, right? So I, I, I guess my uh, we can, would be hope. Let's get this fixed so that we have the system ready to go and we have the, the emergencies.
Uh, mayor and council and, and town manager, I, um, we can set that date, whatever, we, we can instead of um, um, what is it? Memorial Day that's coming up or Labor Memorial Day? It doesn't have to be Memorial Day. We could set that for um, May first if we want. We could set it for April fifteenth if we want and say, as of this date, you will have a, a high risk.
Yeah, I might.
Or, or stage one response.
It's not a response issue. It is a prevention issue.
Right.
And, and all of our big fires that up in that area have been before uh, Memorial Day.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm, you know, uh, it needs to be before fire season. So.
We can.
Mayor.
We can work with the manager to do that.
As you re, as you recall, that was you and, and me and Backley that came up with the one that we've got. And I wonder.
Remember, I don't remember the date in there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, uh, you know, we.
Are you saying I'm responsible for that?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, I'm saying that we came up with this ordinance.
Right.
We came up with this ordinance that, that is the stage one, stage two. And, and, and that stuff, it was, we worked on that.
Like I said, it's a system issue.
Yeah, but it, but I think, I think the variable here is you could have a very dry, you could have a wet December and a very dry spring. And I think your, your key here is, is the moisture levels and the fine fuels. And perhaps we find a way to actually trigger that thing based on those factors, because those are the ones that could be variable. You could have a February, we, um, two years ago, we had a, we had a brush fire up in the mountains in January. We had two of them that were started by recreational, eight recreational shooters. And uh, you know, that typically would, you know, I mean, nobody was ready for that. That could happen here in town as well, based on uh, on how much, you know, uh, the, uh, the, the climatology might be the word uh, when it happened. But if you tie that to the, to the moisture level and the fine fuels, I think you've got something that's actually proactive and, and actually accurate for no matter what years, what, what year it is.
Yeah, my only problem is that didn't work this time.
Well, we haven't, we haven't triggered it yet. It's not our ordinance. I've said we changed, we changed the ordinance to, 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 to trigger the ordinance by those fine fuel uh, measurements.
Okay, well, I, we, let's take a look at it and see.
Absolutely. We had a discussion right after you and I did and, and we'll go ahead and bring something back for your consideration. And, and you know, it's, I think uh, council member Bunch is bringing up a good point. I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a hard, fast date. It might be either an either or, that actually there might be some other variable factors that can also be part of it, so it could start sooner if necessary. So.
Would it be necessary to tell to people this is when it started?
We've got those signs. We got those, those light up signs in town.
Good, yeah.
Right.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Is that right? Sorry. Chief Tobin?
Yes, ma'am.
How's the budget on the second fire station?
Oh, councilman, that's so interesting that you ask that question. So um, we are currently um, finalizing our uh, operational budget Daisy Mountain is for next fiscal year. The, the station opens the year after. Um, so we will begin uh, the, the operational budget for twenty-five, twenty-six this time next year for the operations component of that fire station. Our board is fully aware that prior to that period of time, they will have to give us direction on how they will finance the construction of the fire station, which is approximately eight million dollars. Uh, so they're look, we're looking at all different types of finance options for that because those will kick in next fiscal year as well. So there's options. They're not good ones. Construction costs, as you know, as you're building a fire station here in your own town are incredibly uh, high at this point. But we have to build a fire station to serve the community. That's just what we have to do. So like you, my board has got a, a lot of pressure, policy pressure to keep, you know, revenue and funding at sustainable levels for the, for the community. But they also have to uh, prioritize their public safety uh, in those areas. So uh, that's coming. Um, they're, they're not surprised. I mean, we brought them along. They were at the meeting, the community meeting and listened to the public talk about how supportive they were of the fire station. So there will come a point where you're gonna have to fish your cut bait. Yeah.
Right.
On it, or not, you know, or all the other options that you have, which are delay and other types of things that are potentially there as well.
I'd like to be kept apprised of the budget as you go along.
Sure.
You know, I don't know how often you have, you're with us for these presentations, but it's important for this community.
Sure, I'd be more than happy to do that. We'll get through this operational budget for, for this fiscal year and then we'll start moving into this. That's our, our next highest priority, obviously, is building a fire station and then figuring out how to staff it in July of the next year.
Very good. Thanks.
And just to, to be clear again, uh, mayor and vice mayor and council, the agreement that we have with Daisy Mountain is the capital portion of that is, that's what he's talking about, is how they do their funding for that. Our commitment as a town is to pay for half of the operating cost of that station. So that's why, not this next year, but the year after, we can look and it's in the five year plan that we've done is one and at least one and a half times the cost of the operating budget versus the capital. And I know that's been confused in the past, but.
No, but that's why I'm concerned because we have a significant investment. No, but that's why I'm concerned, because we have a significant investment.
Yeah, us us too, have the same equal investment, actually.
Right.
Yep. And then I I just put up the last slide. This was actually in the presentation before I stuck in the ones about the fire line fire. We'd already been addressing it as we were talking about by looking at this in defensible space. Um, the hydrant is was mentioned that up on Spur Crossed by the helicopter pad is gonna help us quite a bit. On May first, Daisy Mountain hosted a tabletop exercise for the region with us in Maricopa County and Daisy Mountain to talk about just exactly what happened Saturday, how we were gonna operate if we had a big fire in a residential neighborhood. Um, so we did some additional practice and training on that. Uh, the protocols were scheduled to go into effect on the the thirteenth. Now they've gone into effect today. And additional high risk staffing, um, we're bringing that up also instead of wait until we'd already decided to come to the thirteenth. So we'll be bringing that up. And that might be a little bit flexible based on the risk of the day. If it's a a red flag day, obviously, we'll have that. If it's a rainy day or rainy schedule, we might not staff that truck. But um, we'll play that by year, because that wasn't scheduled to start until Memorial Day.
I think what you're finding, and to the mayor's point, when you start your restrictions, your fire restrictions is is one thing. When you start preparing your staffing for operational response is another thing, but I can tell you that on the second one, which is what I do, there's, there's a lot of guessing. There's some science. There's, there's moisture in the air. There's the, there's all these things that these experts that go to NEU tell you about. I can tell you when things are gonna burn quicker than when the others, then they don't. But then you look at the last two weeks and you see it's here a lot sooner than any of us expected it would be in in Arizona and in the Phoenix metro area specifically. So then you expect people like me and Jim and Grady to to make the changes that we need to to make sure that your town is safe, you know, from an operational response perspective. We've done that. We moved up these dates. We saw the handwriting on the wall. We had a very busy weekend. We had a very busy day, and we can always ratchet that back depending on how things change. So that's what you expect us to do, and that's what we're doing. So.
Yeah, I I want to be clear, though. I think the response is wonderful.
I completely understand. Yeah, Daisy Mountain hasn't gone to level one restrictions either, either as the county.
It's the prevention and the the silly negligent people that are starting these fires. That's where the target has to be.
Unfortunately, many of those are done by these scientists. I don't mean, I don't, you know, people that know about the ambient air. They know about the climate conditions. They know about the growth. And they try and make these projections for when they think that's gonna occur, and it's not perfect. And as you see, last weekend, it wasn't perfect, right? And and two years ago, i- in in May. Uh, a difficult time too, so we can, we can adjust.
Jim, uh, on the second bullet point?
Yes.
Not sure that that location makes sense to me.
The, we put the hydrant on the end of Sean's water line that runs up Spur Cross. It's actually not at the helicopter pad.
It's not on Schoolhouse.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's mistake on my part.
Right, so on.
Spur Cross, Spur Cross, I'm sorry. I was thinking about the Schoolhouse fire when I'm changing that. So that's Spur Cross, I'm sorry. It's at the the top. If you're going up there, it's at the top of the hill, you'll see the new hydrant on the left side. And that that actually helped the water department out also, because he has to flush that every once in a while, because that's a long dead end main. And so um, but that's gonna help both of us.
Well, thank you very much. I think the response saved a bunch of houses there at Schoolhouse. I was up on that.
Mine.
Yeah, well, and and again, what you saw, the response, um, I'll get an advertisement. You saw the Scottsdale Fire Department here, you saw the Phoenix Fire Department here, you saw Daisy Mountain on your fire truck here and Daisy Mountain, not your units here, uh, and that was seamless. We operate as if we were one fire department, and you saw the benefits of the automatic aid system on Saturday, when you saw all of that happen. And it it started, we put it out, and then you you just time, you just move on.
They stayed overnight to make sure that there wasn't any others. And the one we had today, you had Scottsdale, Daisy Mountain, Phoenix, all at the house fire we had just before council meeting. Same thing, same thing.
Brian, that's why we brung you on.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Residents, thank, thank you to your residents, because you did, it was, it was a lot of heavy lifting, but you you did it.
You guys are wonderful to have y'all in town.
Thank you.
There being no further business, meeting adjourned. So moved.